Call this meeting to order. Stand and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. We ask for your presence in this meeting as we strive to be productive and efficient in our discussions. Help us to stay focused and on task. Give us creative ideas and solutions that will bring about positive results. You have a brief moment for your own intentions. Thank you. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion to that motion?
The only comment I'd make is, uh, I'm gonna declare and announce that I have a conflict with issue E5, so I, um, I might participate as a member of the public, or, but I will not for sure participate as a commissioner.
Thank you, Secretary. Get that for the notes in minutes? Thank you. Any other discussion for this motion of approval agenda? Saying none, those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I'm gonna remind everybody that, uh, if there's something on the agenda, uh, it'd be best to wait for that agenda item. I suspect we have several people here that is here in regards to the Infinity Landing project. I suspect it's like, uh, Easter Sunday mass today, so. I borrowed your line. It was a good line. I suspect that I'm gonna guilt you into coming next week too. It doesn't usually work. Um, at that, uh, during the hearing, I'm gonna remind everybody that that is specifically, we're gonna specifically talk about relocation of the section line at that point in time. So, I don't want to hear, uh, we've gotten a lot of calls, got a lot of emails. We're taking all of those very seriously. Uh, but with that said, uh, I'm gonna keep that conversation to that vacation and relocation. So, what I'm going to do, it's, it's, it's gonna be kinda confusing today, but, uh, 'cause there's several people here that wanna address some topics with Infinity Landings. Uh, I suspect we have proponents and I suspect we have opponents here today. Um, so I'm going to open that up right now. Um, I'm gonna give the opportunity, let's, let's keep it subject specific right now for Infinity Landing. I'm gonna go ahead and let's start with the opponents. Um, I'm going to, uh, keep it at three minutes apiece for everybody. And I'm going to limit the opponent testimony on this to fifteen minutes total. And I'm gonna do the same thing for the proponents. I'm gonna give them each, again, three minutes apiece. And it'll be three minute, or, excuse me, fifteen minutes for the proponent testimony. So, try not to be repetitive, um, but, uh, let's do that now. So, if there's anything on this project, uh, that anybody would like to speak, uh, opponents only right now. Uh, I'm going to start my clock and if Commissioner Liggett would help me with the clock, I'd appreciate that. So.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a clarification? So, are you saying if they have comments regarding the actual subdivision now's the time?
Yes.
But then there's the public hearing on the relocation.
Yes, yes. Yeah. I wanna keep the hearing specific to the relocation. So, I think it's fair with the number of people here. I think there's some people on both sides of this topic that want to state some things. So, uh, that's when I wanna give this opportunity now. So, uh, let's start with the opponents to this subdivision. Uh, if they'd like to come forward, we'll start our clock now. If you'd wanna start the, uh, total time, I'll try to keep track of the individual time. And please announce yourself.
Can you turn your mic on, Todd?
Uh, yeah, got it. Thank you. So, I do have handouts that, uh, reference, uh, several things that I'll discuss, but, uh, I'll try to be quick and, um, my first question is the FAA report that, uh, that approves or disapproves the, uh, this airport project, has that been provided to the commission?
No.
We have a letter from the FAA, which is included in the packet. Okay. Um, alright, so. Are you, you don't have the full, the full disclosure? Okay. So, I guess it would be hard for, for us to, to know exactly what was in the disclosure if it's not provided. I would request that if the, if the commission could get the full, the full, uh, disclosure. Uh, my second question is, has Ellsworth Air Force Base been, been notified? Have they provided input on this proposal?
But I think that was in the planning meeting when they brought that up, so.
Okay. So, um, those of us that have lived there for a long time know that the, the overflight of the bombers from Ellsworth is, uh, right over where this airport would, this proposed airport is. Um, I would, uh, uh, I, I, I think it creates a danger in operations of the airport and, uh, potentially endangers the people and homes in a, in a large area around that. Uh, my next question is, has a, uh, has an environmental impact study been completed for this proposal?
My knowledge, no, 'cause I don't think it's required in our ordinance.
Um, so, state law states that, uh, um, and it would be STCL 34A91 requires state agencies to consider the impact of governmental actions on the environment, including land, air, water, noise, existing patterns of population concentration, distribution or growth, and existing community or neighborhood character. We, we as, as the people of, of this area would certainly request a environmental impact study be done if there's serious consideration of, uh, of approving this project. And again, that's, uh, 34A91 subsection four and 34A92 would be the two STCLs that cover that.
Your time, Mr. Batest.
Okay, STCL 50-5-1, application for approval of public airports and certain private airports. Paraphrasing, any owner or operator of a airport within six miles of the nearest boundary of an approved public airport shall apply to state or nautical commission approval for the airport, private airport prior to its use. A violation is class two misdemeanor.
I'm sorry, sir. Would you please announce yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name is Marty Quinn. I live at 2168 Forest Place on Peterson Road. So, I'm directly south. I'm a neighbor of Todd's. I apologize. Anyhow, we know the flight paths. I have lived there since 1998, uh, December of 1998. So, I've been a long-term residence of that area and so I know the flight paths of everything from Ellsworth. Taking off, they're over our houses every time. Coming in, they're just north of us. Um, as you can clearly see, Google Maps, that, uh, it's over a five, it's almost a one-mile-long runway and taxis are completed, roughed in. Uh, the size of the runway can accommodate turboprops and other mid-size, uh, jet vehicles. Um, again, this falls within, as I'm sure it's, uh, Ellsworth flight path. So, we cannot see where this can accommodate what FAA or the federal government would allow. I mean, look what's happened in Washington. Um, it's gonna cause a lot of noise, vibrations and air, air noise, uh, vibration stuff in homes. The end of the runway, actually, I've been on it. I've driven down to it, looked down it, uh, there's a housing development right at the end of the runway. So, I mean, if I was a homeowner there, I would be livid. Luckily, I'm a little bit south of it, but if I was in line, I would never, never in my life, I'd do everything I could to make sure that this didn't happen. 'Cause it is right, it's probably within 200 yards of the end of houses. So, there's a lot of things that can happen, but, I mean, in my mind, you know, if they're wanting a big, a mile-long runway like this, different if you're doing a single prop plane, jumping out of a field, that's one thing. They have this totally roughed in. It is a mile-long runway or just on the bottom side of mile and it's not good. It's not good for the community. It's not good for any of us living there.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
I'll turn this over to the next one.
My name is Mary Thomas and I live at.
Please no talking in the audience.
I live at, um, I can't even remember my own address. Mary Thomas. On Peterson Road towards the, the, uh, west end. And my concern is the flight paths and the approaches, having lived next to one. And just the noise and that these will be low-level flying aircraft, 'cause I'm within a mile, mile and a half at the end of the runway, and so they're gonna be pretty low. And I have a ridge behind me and that noise is gonna bounce off that ridge. And so, it's just gonna reverberate through, um, the neighborhood. The other one I have is concern of the storage of aviation fuel in that neighborhood with the prevailing winds being out of northwest. If a fire starts, that's coming our direction. Um, and so, we're pretty dry out there anyway and just having that come. And the last one I have is traffic on Haynes. This is proposed to be 51 new houses. Haynes is already, um, in poor shape. And so, if you look at potentially two cars per household, that puts another hundred and two cars on Haynes. And, um, we already have people that go into oncoming lanes to bypass the rough roads and there's no left turns lanes off of Haynes. And I think that traffic is just gonna increase and make it, uh, potentially more difficult. Thank you.
Thomas, anybody else?
My name is Bambi Arlad. I'm at 2389 Peterson Road. My concern is, um, the possible spill of avgas and the location of the fire departments that are able to clean up an avgas spill. Um, there is the Rapid City Fire Department, which is 19 minutes, 10.4 miles away, and the Rapid City Regional Airport Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Facility, which is 33 minutes and 19.7 miles away. Um, from my, from looking into it, it says that these spills need to be cleaned up fairly quickly. Um, he did include support letters from Piedmont Fire Department, which is a volunteer fire department, which is 19 minutes or 12.2 miles away, and a support letter from North Haynes Volunteer Fire Department, which is 17 minutes or 10.3 miles away. Um, we do have a lot of, um, animals out there. We've got wildlife, deer, sometimes elk. We've got turkeys. We've got rabbits. And, um, people have horses and cows. We have dogs. Um, I think there's just a huge concern for animal life and, um, if any of this gets into the air, it can combust. Um, so, yep, that's my, our concern. Thank you for your time.
Any other opponents? How are we doing on the total time, Commissioner Liggett?
Ten minutes.
You have used ten minutes? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Conley, 13764 Coniston Stogalou, Piedmont. And I personally am a private pilot, former aircraft owner, and I'm opposed to the operations of the airport because I know that if there is an aircraft fire due to a crash, and there will be, it's, it's a numbers game, that I don't think there's gonna be enough resources to fight the fire if we have dry prairie grass. And on top of that, I'm concerned about the noise and, and air congestion over our area. And those are my main points.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
You're welcome.
Anybody, any other opponents?
I'm Randy Conway, uh, 1522 Brookside Lane, Piedmont. I live right on the north side of the runway and, uh, I've had a little conversation online with Mr. Baumiller. He's under the impression that he can fly over our Golden Valley settlement at 500 feet. Uh, I've been in contact with, uh, Steve Hoogerheid and he, and I am gonna give him an update after this meeting. He's with the Rapid City FESO office, the FAA. Very interested in what they're doing there. And our housing development is considered a settlement. Settlements, he has to be over 1,000 feet over the highest structure. So, we're concerned about low-flying aircraft. And then he's also under the impression that when he takes off, no altitude restrictions apply. So, takeoff and landings altitude is only as necessary to facilitate the takeoff and landings. So, what he's putting out, all this information to all these homeowners, is not correct. Uh, I've been around airplanes. I've been, I'm an airframe and power plant mechanic. I've had my license since 1987. I've been around a lot of aviation. And what this guy's saying, he's putting out to everybody that his airplanes are no, uh, no louder than a motorcycle or a lawnmower. Power assurance runs, takeoffs, we all know better than that. Uh, they make a lot of noise and, uh, so, it's gonna disrupt the quality of our life and it's also gonna be a safety issue with low-flying aircraft over our neighborhoods. And I really think it's gonna affect our property values. I don't think anybody wants to be living next to, to an airport. I have no problem with air parks. He just picked the wrong place to put it. So, uh, that's, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Is any other opponents?
My name is Thomas Rair. I am, uh, uh, located at 1200 Peterson Road. I am a medical doctor in the community and I have concerns about avgas being the last vestige of, uh, significant exposure to the community of lead. Uh, the primary, uh, means of transmission is through the air. So, I'm basically right along the, the flight path, me, my wife, my three young daughters. So, I'm concerned because, uh, there's no, uh, safe level of lead exposure, particularly in, uh, uh, the development of children. Uh, it's a potent neurotoxin. It's associated with, uh, multiple other health problems, uh, decreased school performance, behavioral disorders, uh, hypertension. Um, it's, uh, there's a long list. This is the last vestige, like I said, um, of lead exposure in the community. Um, and to that end, there are options for lead-free gas. Have, uh, supplied the Amicus formerly in email with more information.
Thank you, Dr. Rair. Any, any other opponents wish to speak? Any other opponents wish to speak? Uh, last one, one of you has your time.
Fourteen minutes.
Yep. Uh, this'll be the last opponent.
I am Guy Mann, developer of Prairie Haven. Most of these issues have been covered. My concern is, I got a development that's been going and, uh, we got 46 homes in there now, capable of doing 150 for a residential community. And I believe the noise and all the other stuff involved is gonna drop my values and their values. I got some ridge lots with very good views. I don't see that happening. But as far as that, everything else is, everybody's covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Uh, that would conclude the opponent testimony. Uh, is there any proponents that wish to speak to this?
My name's Gary Hicks. I live at 990 Rocky Road. Be the, one of the houses that the airstrip is gonna go, the airplanes will be flying over and landing directly over my house. And I'm concerned about the noise factor.
Okay, sir. We'll, we'll take that down. Um, I asked for proponents. I assume that you're, you're speaking and so I'll, I'll write, you'll, you'll be on the record. I was concerned about noise. So, any opponent, or, excuse me, proponents. We're gonna switch to proponents. Yeah. Three minutes apiece and 15 minutes total. Mr. Baumiller? You'll get the same privilege of three minutes.
Hi, my name's, uh, Craig Baumiller. I own the property at 2601 Elk Creek Road. Going over. Uh, sorry. Um, and I just kinda wanna go and kinda look over some of this stuff. Uh, the thousand, the thousand feet, I mean, I don't see us even flying over that subdivision. Um, usually, uh, landing traffic, um, you know, you're flying right in the vicinity of the runway. Um, and, uh, you know, you, you stay at a thousand feet until you come in to land, you know? Um, the 500 feet, I mean, they, the FAA, um, you know, depends on what they consider a settlement or a densely populated area, obviously a stadium, things like that, you know? So, I mean, that's, there's no, uh, set deal. But nobody wants to fly over anybody's houses at 500 feet. Um, it's, you know, we're trying to work well with everybody. Um, but I'm gonna move on. Uh, Ellsworth, um, they were contacted. I actually was contacted. It's all in the, you know, the FAA took care of all that stuff. Um, and I was contacted by them. I was contacted by their reps in DC, everything. They're completely, we're okay with that. Um, they said no endanger to their flight. I, we deal with Ellsworth all the time. I mean, if you fly around Rapid anywhere, you fly through Ellsworth. They're very easy to deal with. Um. Uh, the state, um, they mentioned about the state. Um, I contacted the state. We're not in their jurisdiction. We're outside of their, uh, jurisdiction. So, they said there's no application required. Um, you know, as far as the runway, um, and where it, uh, I guess where it's facing and the reason we put it there, which has been there since the very beginning of the preliminary plot, um, is there, because on one end of the runway, there's 5,000 feet before another structure. And on the other end, it's 2,200 feet. Um, it's not right at the end of housing developments. I mean, I've. I mean, I've flown into, where they literally have the runway and a house right next to it, I mean, that's, and I don't think that's safe. And the reason for the longer runway is to allow us to land deeper into the runway so we are not causing problems in flying over people's houses. Runway lights were another thing. I don't plan on putting in runway lights at this time. I plan on having restrictions on when people can fly. If we ever did do runway lights, 'cause obviously it gets dark at four in the wintertime, it's radio controlled, they turn on for ten minutes, they shut off, they're not that bright. You can see them for the air. You know, traffic on Haynes Avenue, obviously, that's a problem with the road, but if they didn't know, that's getting redone. They're widening it a lot and making it to county specs. You know, they talk about big avgas spills and things like that. You know, these planes hold the same amount of fuel, most of them, as cars do. I can guarantee you that a lot of these neighbors, they have gas cans in their garage.
Your time, Mr. Baumiller. Would you like to finish up with that sentence?
Oh, um, I guess where we have...
With that sentence is what I said.
Oh, oh, sorry.
But that, well, it's your time, I think it's your time.
Uh, yeah, I was just, you know, a lot of these people, they have race gas in their garages and everything.
Yeah, any other proponents? Thank you, Mr. Baumiller.
My name's Bruce Bowen. I live at seventy-seven twenty-seven North Wild Turkey Drive. I'm a pilot. I've, have airplanes at the Sturgis Airport. I don't intend to build or purchase property for Mr. Baumiller. I guess I just have one simple request for the commission today, and that is that you base your decision on moving the section line on the facts. The opponents, let's face it, the opposition to this is because it's there. It's the location. The location is ideal because people are gonna build high-end homes, which these will be, don't wanna drive twenty miles on dirt roads, and don't take this personally, but Meade County roads are muddy when it rains and does seem when it doesn't. I, I'm, I live on a dirt road, and I think that this location is ideal for this air I think the, many of the concerns I've heard today about the avgas and the noise and other things are unfounded. Airports are, are, for the most part, safe. In Sturgis Airport out here, we've had a fast growth in the last five years. There's over a hundred airplanes out there now, and the accident record is remarkably safe. So, I urge you to vote on the section line relocation on those facts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Is there any more proponents to this project?
Yes. My name is Dan Krauser. I actually live at twenty-six oh one El Creek Road. We live on the property, next to the current structure that's out there. I can tell you, as somebody who lives on the property and has had planes fly over, I mean, bigger jets, commercial planes, even prop planes, the amount of noise pollution that you're gonna get out there is minimal by comparison, and you get just as much noise pollution from the El Creek Road and Haynes Avenue, um, street traffic. The amount of people that drive up, up and down those roads at high speeds and are making, you know, have these loud motors, is probably worse even than what you'll hear from those planes, especially taking off and flying in. Beyond that, I can tell you that, you know, knowing Craig and knowing his, who he is as a person, I can tell you that what he's putting out there is going to be put to such a code that he's gonna make sure that everything, just like he runs with his own auto, or his own diesel mechanic business, all of the regulations that he has in place to keep things safe will be put to the same standards for this air park and for the movement of this run, or this section line for the purpose of this runway. The whole point of moving the section line is to make the runway safer. Doesn't necessarily have to be moved to make this runway work, but it's safer to move it and have more distance for these planes to fly in and fly out. So, it is actually a better and more safety protocol to do it the way he's doing it, rather than to try and do it, try and shoehorn it in the way that it is right now. I think that's, that's my type.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krauser. Any other proponents to this project?
My name is Carl Johnclaus. I live at thirteen five fifty Frontier Loop. Some of the opponents, I would just like to address some of their concerns, hopefully pragmatically. As far as the airspace involved with, with Ellsworth and the conflict of traffic there, all general aviation and all aviation primarily operates under C and avoid. Now, there's air traffic control services that can, services that can add to that, but primarily, just like any other traffic coming off of any other airport, whether it's Rapid City, Sturgis, Belle Fouch, or wherever, would be a C and B scene avoidance. So, simply the fact that there's traffic to the airbase doesn't necessarily mean it's an increased risk. As far as the noise, that's a pretty common theme. Aircraft generally are transient in their noise footprint, primarily during takeoff. That's when the highest power is set, and that noise, as it departs the area within thirty to forty-five seconds, is going to rapidly decrease. It's not like living to a road or an interstate where it's constant all day. On arrival, the aircraft are low, very low-power settings, and that noise is vastly reduced. So, I think that, that the noise concerns are probably being exaggerated in the concerns of, of the neighbors. As far as avgas, yes, it does contain lead. There's been current work over various industries to try to eliminate aviation fuel that has lead. It's a complex problem, I won't go into now. However, there's a large list of safe handling and storage criteria that could be utilized at an infinity landing that would minimize the likelihood of any avgas spills. As far as lead being introduced to the atmosphere, I'm sure there's research that would show that the parts per million of lead coming out of an aircraft exhaust in relation to where you live would be so insignificant, it would be unlikely to cause any health concerns. And finally, for fire danger, that certainly is a concern for all of us, all of the times, particularly in the summer months, but I don't see that as being anything beyond what a vehicle or a poorly maintained piece of farm equipment would cause. Trying to, to list the fact that an airplane crash would cause a fire, well, that's probable, but aviation is a culture of safety, so nobody wants to crash an airplane. I would say that that is a minimized risk at best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnclaus. Any other proponents? Any other proponents? How are we doing on time, Commissioner Leggett?
Ten minutes in.
Okay, ten minutes in.
I'm Darrell Schumaker. I live at ninety-four fifty-six Rath Lane. I've been, I'm retired from the Blackhawk Fire Department. I've qualified as a Type Two Incident Commander for forest fires and structural. In my years of training, we went to Ellsworth and Blackhawk, Piedmont, North Haynes, and all adjoining fire, or fire departments that were on the flight line were trained to fight plane incidents. Were also, were trained, Blackhawk, Piedmont, and North Haynes sends people all over the western United States to fight fires. They have got newest and the greatest equipment and, to fight wildland fires. The seed planes, which one of them is stationed in Hot Springs, Rapid City generally has one, along with slurry bombers. The seed planes can land on this strip. Seed planes do not always carry slurry. They most of the time carry water. Their turnaround time could be eliminated by about thirty minutes. The slurry bombers, you're looking at forty-five minutes. They can load, there's gonna be water at that deal. They'll do well, will put out enough water to fill one in less than two minutes. They carry three hundred gallons. They're used primarily on wildland fires, but they also use them in the timber. So, the turnaround time on one of them is probably gonna be around ten minutes, fifteen minutes for him to load and re, he does have, but the, the slurry bombers have priority over the seed planes, so if we had any crashes or the seed planes and prairie fires are the number-one attack, if the wind's blowing, you can't keep up with, they'll lay a line ahead of the fire to slow it down. So, the concern of the fire safety out there is drastically reduced on this airstrip. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Any other proponents to this?
Well, good morning. I'm Brandon Jensen. I live at sixty forty-two Springfield Road. I've been in aviation my entire life. My father's an AI, an AP. I've lived on an airport for twenty years of my life throughout high school, lived on the tarmac and everything. No issues with lighting, noise complaints, anything like that. With aircraft, an aircraft flies and has about ninety decibels of sound coming out of it, a lawnmower is the same amount, ninety. At one mile, that decibel level will reduce to sixty, which is amount that a normal conversation is at. Beyond that, with the aviation fuel and everything on that side, there will be spill kits, there will be anything and everything provided if there ever is a spill to provide a stoppage to it. Avgass is very fast evaporating, so it does not go into ground very fast, like that, so it'll help with that side of things. Otherwise, on the section line of things, this board has already approved a move of a section line, as in with the gun range, and that wasn't even a move, that was a vacated and removed it completely. This is just asking for a moving of it, so the section line is still there.
Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Saying none, I'm gonna close public testimony on this topic, and Mr. Jensen, it was, it was a relocation on the gun range. Yes, yep, just to, just to clarify, is there any questions from the commission for anybody? I'd like to keep this moving along, so if there's nothing drastic, if there's something drastic, and the commissioners like to ask somebody, ask it, or else just move along.
I have a question, Craig. Have there been...
Mr. Baumiller, just come forward, please. If, public testimony is closed, but if you get a direct question from the commission, come forward, please.
Have there been planes landing, flying and landing out of that airport right now?
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, let's close this topic. Is there anything else the public would like to bring before the commission, we get on the rest of the meeting? Yes, sir. Come to the microphone, please.
My name is Marty Quinn, two one six eight Forest Place. We're advised not to talk about section line, but the proponents have brought it up. One thing to keep in mind, for us people that live from Feather Place and back, if there is a major incident that happens on Peterson Road...
We will, Mr. Quinn, we're gonna handle the relocation of the section line when we get to the hearing.
Okay.
We're gonna handle that, and I close, I close public testimony on this subject this time. So, thank you. Is there anything else that would like to, the commission, anybody would like to bring before the commission? Infinity landing is, I have closed public testimony on infinity landing. Is there anything else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Atwater. I live at seventeen sixty-four Rocky Road. I suppose as the crow flies, about a quarter of a mile, half a mile. I do not, I did not plan on speaking. The only thing I'd like to have the commission to take into consideration, and I don't know if that's right or wrong, is the quality of life and what we moved out there to do and to have. And it, it, so that's not important, or that's...
That's very important, ma'am. I closed public testimony on infinity landing, so I'm asking for anything, if you got a road, you can complain about your road, you can complain about something else.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna complain about my road.
We're, we're taking, we're taking everything seriously. We've got, thank you, Ms. Atwater. Any, is there any other subject besides the infinity landing development? Again, the section line will be coming up, we'll have a hearing on that at ten o'clock if we get there. Nothing else? If, if it's on infinity landing, I'm not gonna take questions here. Okay.
On two hundred twentieth.
Okay.
My name is Al Baimit. I live at one four seven nine four, uh, one hundred thirty-ninth. We're talking about two hundred twentieth that has that new development on it? Is that gonna get blacktopped or anything? As far as, you know, the access going through, roads are rough, so I'm just...
There's no plan to blacktop two twentieth. That, I know of your highway liaisons.
The county, the county has no plan of, of blacktopping that road. The developer, I'm not entirely sure, but he, he has discussed that in the past. I have not seen a formal request, I guess, to finish it.
Yeah, if you're talking about, you're talking about the development on the corner of one thirty-ninth and two twentieth?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's been... 'Cause I noticed on the thing, it was, and I'm not talking about infinity. Right, it's that first mile. I just noticed that there's an access road that goes through there, but if you get to a certain point, that access road going from there to Haynes, pretty much shot. Yeah. So, the only thing the developer on that corner has talked about, I think that's, there is Hewitt, J.D. Hewitt, is to, to, potentially, if he could get a TIF to blacktop it from Erician Row to one thirty-ninth, but he wouldn't go any further beyond that. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for...
Yeah, it's all in section line.
Section line, yeah.
Anything else that would like to come before the commission?
My name is Bambi Arlad, two three eight nine Peterson Road. Since I'm here, I might as well bring up the condition of Peterson Road. We would, I'd really, we'd really like to know if we could get some gravel out there instead of them just coming out and blading the stuff out of the ditch. Some new gravel laid, there's potholes everywhere, it's rough on our vehicles, rough on people that ride horses, so if that could be discussed somewhere sometime...
I should. I'll bring our highways guy up here. Is that, is that one of our roads, Troy?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we plan on, you know, improving that road as well. I mean, with gravel and ditch work, the drainage isn't very good, and it's, kinda goes in conjunction with Haynes Avenue. We wanna be able to get that done before Haynes Avenue is either under construction or improved, so we don't tear up anything more than we have to, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have eleven hundred miles of road.
I know. I just, I just, I'm here, I might as well bring it up.
Thank you, Ms. Arlad. Yep. Any other, anything else that someone would like to bring forward for the commission?
Yeah, my, my name is Mike Dudash. Lives, lives on Haynes. Has any progress been, been made for sufficient funding to rebuild Haynes? Because yesterday, prime example, went to Menards, three twenty, twenty-foot, two-by-sixes, cranked down, and it's on my trailer. By the time I got home, they were sideways. The balance is bouncing. I mean, it's bad.
Yep. Answer to your question is yes. Commissioner Leggett, would you like to...
Yeah, so we awarded a bid this year for three million dollars to reconstruct a big portion of Haynes. It's two miles of reconstruction and four miles of an overlay. I don't know if we've gotten a schedule back, but we, we did award that contract, so...
We do not have a schedule yet. We've been talking with the contractor, and they have the option to start the work this year or next year, so it's up to them. They present their schedule, we review it, and if it works for us, then we'll approve it, but we have not received it back yet, so it's still up in the air. It's, uh, up to them. They present their schedule, we review it, and if it works for us, um, then we'll approve it, but we have not received it back yet, so it's still, uh, up in the air.
Yeah, and the, the reason for the two-year window on that was, uh, basically a cost savings, so it gives the contractors more time to complete that roadway. Uh, saved the county maybe a million dollars, so.
As long as, as long as there's a projected, projected window, then it's, it's gonna get done.
Yep.
That's- Some of the roads, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dudasch. Is there anything else anyone wants to bring for the commission? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public testimony at this time. Let's go down to routine business, equalization.
Good morning, Commissioners, Reeacrain, the Director of Equalization. I'm happy to announce that our twenty-six, twenty-seven assessment appraisal plan has been put into place. We are focusing on parcels east and north of Sturgis, uh, the subdivisions of Bloxburg and Vernon Heights, the, uh, airport hangars at the Sturgis Airport, and we're doing an I ninety land study, an I ninety corridor land study. So all in all, minus the land study, we're gonna be touching about seventeen hundred and ninety-six parcels. That's a lot for a team of four.
Any questions for Ms. Crane with the equalization?
Certain areas, they are still rising. Yeah, stays on market is longer, but-
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ms. Crane? Hearing none, that brings us to, let's skip over facilities, and we'll just handle that with the agenda item with facilities. Uh, human resources, I see you're excited to come to DAS.
Good morning, Commissioners, Deborah Branshird, Mead County Human Resource Director. Uh, the human resource report for the month of April is posted publicly on site for review. The only things that have really changed is we've had a couple additional positions open up in highway, uh, they're May openings, so it brings the highway HEO Class A to four open positions. Uh, one of the pending people, um, did not pass, uh, the pre-employment health and drug testing, so that one dropped off. And then, um, another person was moved down into the mechanic category, which was added, and has an offer letter out.
Oh, what you're saying is, anybody that's listening today, we have some openings in the county.
You must pass a drug test.
Pass the drug test.
Have a CDL, and then come see me, okay? All right, so, uh, let's see. We've reopened the treasure, as you probably saw, and we had filled that position, the person had left after ten days, and so, um, we've reopened that position. And we have another applicant that we're making a job offer to today. Hopefully they'll accept. Yep, lots of interviews lately. Uh, the only other thing I have under projects is all thirteen, uh, the jurisdictions have submitted their wage and salaries for our, uh, classification and compensation update, so that's good news. Um, I worked with, uh, Conderyn Associates on the last one yesterday, and we were successful getting all the information, so I think we're in good shape, and they'll begin the, the documentation and whatever they do to start working on the results.
And we're expected to see something maybe in June on that, is?
June, yeah. I think they have until late, mid-June, something like that, yeah. It, you know, it all depends on how long it took people to get things sent to them, and they, they did have a timeline, but, uh, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that they, uh, all of those were received in, so.
Thank you, Ms. Branshird. Any questions? Thank you. Uh, we have, anybody here from IT? Here from our IT department?
Tony's on vacation.
Oh, my gosh, what are we doing? I'm surprised everything is-
Clayton's helping me here.
He's doing a good job, but, uh-
He's doing a good job.
You got a big computer in front of you.
Well, well, yeah, my, I broke today.
Okay, let's move down to facilities. Uh, Mr. Petracco. Uh, let's go over your KPI, if there's any que- let's just handle if there's any questions. We kinda got a, we got hearings at ten o'clock, so. Any questions on his KPI? Okay, let's just move down to the agenda item. If there's no questions, uh, permission to start the bid process for the Courthouse and Law Center roof projects. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just looking to get that, that advertisement going.
Please announce yourself, so we get that in record.
Ben Petracco, Mead County Facilities Director. Um, yeah, looking to get permission to get the, uh, the roof projects moving forward, so we can get them advertised and get the bidding process started.
Okay, and that's just to start the bids. Is there, uh, Mr. Leggett, your liaison of that department, any, anything else?
Uh, yeah, has Ken reviewed these? Um, I, I think this is a long time coming to get some of these things, uh, identified and hopefully fixed. The Law Enforcement Center has had a leak. You guys have been fighting it for twenty years?
Yes, several leaks.
Yeah, yeah, multiple leaks. Um, so this is, the idea is to get a price for both metal roof or PVC roof on that, and then the courthouse was, uh, just PVC.
Right, yeah, we're looking to get the Law Center bid, two different styles, and then, uh, or just the rubber on the courthouse.
And we assigned these funds, correct?
Yeah, and, and last year we did assign, uh, funds, so, um, if successful in, in bidding, uh, the award would, we would have to do a hearing to get, to release those funds.
Right, after, yes.
And, and just for the audience, you know, we all have to replace a roof now and then. Um, these two roofs, we're hoping will come in not too high, over eight hundred thousand, but it's probably more likely to come in at a, maybe a million?
I'm gonna say six hundred, everybody's listening.
Oh.
Let's say two hundred, I think, is what it's gonna come in.
Yeah.
Okay, let's-
Oh, okay.
Let's keep moving along. Um, is there any other questions, comments, and/or action on this item?
I'll make a motion to, uh, I guess, advertise for bids on the law enforcement and courthouse roofs.
I wholeheartedly second that.
Motion and a second on the floor to start the bid process for this item. Any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, uh-
Thanks, Ben, for putting all the work into that. I mean, it's a, it's been a long process, um, so hopefully we get some good bids coming out of it.
Yeah, we're getting pretty close to having the, hopefully the scheduling all put together with the architect and stuff, so.
Okay, let's go down to items. C two, uh, we got some items that you'd possibly like surplus over there.
Yeah, so that building's been kind of a, you know, collection storage for the last ten years or so. There's just some items in there that basically have no value, a lot of broken down old office chairs, obsolete radio systems, uh, just stuff we've kinda hoarded, I guess, for lack of a better word, but I, yeah, I'm just looking for, um, permission to be able to get rid of some of that stuff.
And I believe some of this is even stuff that we had, uh, on the last auction and did not sell. Is that correct?
That is correct, for sure.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a little material.
Yeah, it's been, it's been auctioned off once, and nobody wanted it.
So we haul it back again. You know, there, there is some, yeah, it's weird, and some of it we keep for parts. Um, I think those items that have been auctioned and didn't, were no sale, I think you can just take them to the dump.
That's, that's what I'm looking to do.
There's, there's a few others, things that were maybe not on the last auction, so they're just trash that we need to throw away.
There is some stuff in there that we don't wanna throw away as well. I mean, we, we still have some cop car parts in there, and some consoles and stuff like that out of some of the sheriff vehicles, so. I'm not talking about that stuff, I'm talking about, yeah, the stuff that's definitely fit for the dump.
It's the kitchen drawer of the county.
To take the dump, well, yeah, to take the dump, we'd need some action, but we can't, I'm looking, Deputy State's Attorney?
Ken Clubber, Deputy State's Attorney. Uh, yes, by appropriate motion, you can determine it's not necessary, and that authorizes him to dispose of by taking to the dump.
Whatever's in his best judgment, we could leave the-
And, uh, just a general statement of, I mean, he's put up the description of items that he wants to do, and a motion to, uh, surplus those items as held at the primary building, and then he can dispose at his discretion.
If there's any other questions, comments, or we got action for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, surplus the items as described, and in the primary building, for Ben to, to kinda pick through and get rid of that stuff, clean out some space.
Second.
Motion and second on the floor to, uh, dispose of these items as described. Any other discussion to that motion? And an evil look, Mr. Wazork.
Yeah, I- We got junk. Um, it would, it would be, I think, prudent to ask that he produce a list, so we have it actually in the record, so nobody comes back and says later to Ben, you threw something away, or somebody ended up with it that was junked out, that we, we formally kind of, maybe approve a more formal list. Cause my understanding was, he's coming, he's asked for surplus, so it, I mean, some of its junk, I'm fine, say, no value junk needs to be sold, these might have some auction, but I think he should probably have a more detailed list, like I said, for, for Ben's protection as much as anybody.
So you'd ask for that list prior to the disposal?
Yeah, and put it together and put a list in front of it.
So, so that would disregard the motion essentially, so you wanna just get us a mo- a, a list of items for our next meeting, we can go look at it?
And Ben, what I'd look for is a list of saying, this is junk, I see no value, we've tried to auction it off before, I just wanted to dispose of it. These are things I think we can surplus and that have some potential value for an auction, but if they don't sell, perhaps at that point, and, and doesn't have to be in depth, just identifying, but I, I don't wanna get in a situation where you junk something, and then somebody's talking around town that they picked it up, you know, out of the junkyard.
If that's fine with you, Mr. Leggett, could you rescind your motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion.
Uh, if you could just get us a list together for the, that's fine, a second, or, okay, if you want us to get us a list for the next meeting, that'd be great. We'll just, uh, okay, that concludes facilities. Uh, Mr. Henderson with VSO, let's hustle up, cause we got, uh, uh, we gotta hear, we got plenty of hearings at ten. I think, Mr. Petracco, if you wanna stay fit, you're, sit there, you're, we, you'll need to talk about the sirens as well. Are there any questions on, uh, Mr. Henderson's report? He's been busy, uh, April he had a hundred and fifty-five veterans assist, a hundred and twenty-one new ones, so. Uh, you keep getting new ones, is, oh, I'm just looking at your report.
Opposite. Other, opposite.
Oh, excuse me, you had twenty, thirty-four new ones, thank you, pointing that out. Any other questions to this report?
Couple of structure fires, um, that you helped on.
Correct. Uh, no injuries, thank goodness. Um, it was a unincorporated, uh, Blackhawk count, Blackhawk, uh, down there, and, um, it was a, a modular home park, I guess, whatever you wanna call it, um, and I don't know the cause, unfortunately, but, um, fortunately, everybody got out, and then we have an outstanding response that we're right on, right on it, and put it out very, very fast. Red Cross came out immediately and assisted this family. You know, unfortunate they lost their home, but they, uh, they made it out alive, and their dogs.
Yeah, thank you.
Certainly.
If there's no more questions on this report, uh, let's move down to D two, emergency management facilities, warning sirens.
My intention here, well, what I did was essentially an audit of all of our warning sirens. We, um, briefly talked about them over the past, and, um, so working with Ben here, I was, uh, was able to, I'm, I'm strictly presenting the data to you. I'm not asking for any motions or anything like that. Um, we just went around, we have, uh, nineteen warning sirens in the county, one in Faith. And if you look at this chart, um, I'll just point out specific things. Ben does the maintenance on all but two of them. His maintenance by replacing batteries, not all of them get replaced every year, they're as needed, and, um, the billing come, the majority of it comes out of the county, out of my budget. Um, they're in different jurisdictions. Somerset is in a little bit of an anomaly, because, uh, a few years ago, I don't have the exact date, but I've worked with Somerset for some of this information, and they have, um, taken upon themselves to do their maintenance and pay their own power bill. Now, there's a third one in Somerset that I haven't found out why. Um, Stage Barn Middle School has one, that we do the maintenance in the, in the power billing, or the payment, rather, um, but it's in Somerset, so.
Maybe it's because, isn't that the one that's seventy-five feet high?
You know, I'm not sure about the heights.
They're all, they're all-
They're all that high?
It's probably cause it was in existence before Somerset did. That one's been there a long time. I think before the school even.
And I found the history by digging through records, um, the Homeland Security grants is what paid for these. I mean, we own them, certainly, I've reached out to them, um, to see if there's any, you know, we fully own them, like there's no, we can, you know, upgrade them, or whatever, whatever the county decides, um-
Except for the two Somerset ones.
Except for the two Somerset.
Just so you guys know for the record, those are not even part of our system at all in any way anymore. We don't set them off, they do it themselves, they're on their own software. Got them on the list here, but they're, yeah, they're not part of ours now.
And then, I, I guess I'll, if you don't have any questions about that, I mean, I'll, you can-
Oh, just since we have a good public outreach here today, uh, how much is a battery replacement, Ben?
Well, I've got, and I'm gonna email you guys this, this list that I just received from the, uh, company that builds these things, as far as looking at upgrading some stuff to some more modern, uh, batteries and chargers that are supposed to be a lot better and last longer. I won't get into the pricing of that for now, but, um, it just depends, I mean, how many, usually you gotta replace all at once, so you're looking at four deep cycle batteries that range between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars apiece. I mean, you can figure eight hundred dollars roughly on the high end to, to get the batteries replaced, and they recommend replacing those every three to four years. Along with, there's just a lot of other ongoing maintenance issues with them as well. We did get the Stage Barn one back up and running.
Oh, did you?
We did, yes, we were able, thanks to Troy and Nate, they, uh, let us use their boom truck. And I've got a guy, Kelly, that has a CDL, so he was able to drive it down there. We got up to the top and, and changed the brushes on the motor and cleaned up some stuff up there, and so it's operational again. I had like eleven other ones that had issues, eleven out of, I think, the eighteen that we have actually. Uh, right now, as far as the software showing, they're all working, they're all up and running again. But as we've seen in the past, sometimes it shows they're working and they're not. We have had that, so.
I was at a conference in Pierre a couple of weeks ago, and during the emergency management ones, there is no, um, grants or anything available at state or federal level for upgrading and getting new, and did you get a final report on how effective the warning system was through the phone system that we had in March?
Well, the only report, uh, I did share, um, with the commission and the public, was the amount of people that completed the survey. Um, Pennington County, it was their second year of doing the test, and we shared that, um, test period and resources with them this year. And they said the first year, it was, uh, they had low numbers as well, and they essentially doubled them, so I'm excited to see what next time we do the test brings. But, um, you know, unfortunately, for the test to work, again, you have to, you have to select it on your phone, you have to tell it to do that.
It wasn't a real good test, really.
Yeah, I mean, it was-
A lot of people didn't have that enabled, right.
Do any of you in the audience have that on your phone? Did you get alerted? Good.
So that tells me it works.
Probably should, because really, I think that's the future. Because if you look at where all of our sirens are, we have people all over Mead County that are not within earshot of these sirens. So if people wanna be alerted to emergencies, they've- So if people wanna be alerted to emergencies, they've, everybody has a cellphone.
Well, I feel like they serve different functions, though, um, the warning sirens are gonna-
Oh, I'm sure they have functions, I'm just saying, Mead County's thirty-four hundred square miles, and these are not covering thirty-four hundred square miles.
Most people's phones have the actual alerts turned on, it's just the test ones that don't come set up that way, so.
If it was real world, everybody would get it, essentially, I mean, theoretically, everybody would get it, and so it's, it's hard to gauge how many people received it if they didn't do the survey, and that communication was the most difficult part, to tell people, "Hey, you need to do this on your phone in order to get this test," but there's, there's nothing to do when it comes, I mean, everybody gets Amber alerts and those kinda things, that's, that's automatic, if it were, because I had to actually select test in the, in the, yes, the signal that I sent.
Hey, we got several hearings scheduled at ten o'clock, so if there's any, anything else, any other questions on this, or, uh, do you have anything else, real quick, Mr. Henderson?
I do not.
Okay, so thank you for this information, and, and it looks like it's a work in progress.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Um, let's go down to our ten o'clock scheduled hearings, uh, brings us to item E one, renewal of twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six malt beverage and South Dakota wine off, on op sale.
Missionary of Crane acting as auditor this go-around, you will see a list of all the applications that have been received. Uh, everybody that had a malt beverage license last year did turn in an application this year. We do have three properties that do not have taxes currently paid, first half.
And that would be the three highlighted in yellow?
Highlighted in yellow, yep.
And this, again, is just setting the hearings?
No, this is the hearing.
Oh, the, the hearing.
It has been properly noticed.
That's right, this is ju- this is me.
Any other questions, comments on this? I, thank you. Has anyone from the public wish to speak to this agenda item? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this gen item? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public testimony on this agenda items. Does the commission have any more questions, comments on this?
I have a question, the, um, is the proper thing to do is not forward tho- not approve those at this time, or is it sup- you approve it, and then the, but the state won't issue the license until the sales tax paid?
I don't, I can't answer the question about the sales tax, the state will actually investigate that on their end. Part of the application process is that the taxes are current, in which case, in these three applications, they are not.
Thank you.
I think in the past, haven't we approved all of them with the exception of those that have not been paid?
Yeah, um, generally, I know that sometime, I can never keep that straight, is whether you approve it, but the state won't finalize it until the sales tax, but if part of the application is approving of the sales tax.
Ben may have more information about that if he has any suggestions.
Just to clarify, the, the taxes that are not paid, is that sales tax or property?
Property tax.
The department that concerns itself with the sales tax issues, the property taxes is ours. So I would suggest we approve, uh, that you do a motion other than the three that are unpaid. Uh, they do have time to renew before they expire, uh, so they will either come in and pay their taxes, and we'll get back on the agenda or not. So you would continue the hearing as to those three?
We'd have to have two motions.
Yes. I continue the hearing for the three, and then motion to approve the others.
Any other questions, comments?
Are there any other issues at any of the sites that we know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Sheriff West, any problems with any of them? Thank you.
Sheriff West announced that there was no problems with anybody on this list from his department, for the record, since you have none on the microphone.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing as regards Royal Casino Two, number one, Royal Casino Two, number two, and The Barn Two, our first meeting in June at ten o'clock.
That'll be June ten?
June ten at ten o'clock. I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to continue the hearing for these, those three three places, to our June tenth meeting. Any discussion to that me- motion? Hearing none, all of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining licenses pending in front of us at this public hearing for the renewal.
Okay.
Motion is second on the floor to approve all licenses except for the three mentioned that will have to be continued. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries, um, brings us down to item E two.
And this is the time and place for the budget supplement hearing for the Highway Department, Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen. As previously, uh, a hearing was set at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, it was noticed in the Faith Independent, as well as on the bulletin boards. We are asking that you supplement a million dollars out of our assigned funds within the general fund for the highway project for improvements on New Underwood Road.
Any questions, anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Morning, gentlemen, I'm gonna give you about three minutes. Did I hear that from Mr. Kamak?
Make sure you turn the-
You've been in the sun!
Okay.
Yeah, make sure you turn your mic on. Go ahead.
Hi, Gail, I need a word of view field, I just wanna thank the commission for the work that you guys have put into this, I know it's been a long haul, and, uh, everybody agrees the road is in need of repair, and I think you guys are moving in the right direction on this. Um, and I just wanna say that I appreciate everything that you guys are doing.
Gary Kamak from Central Mead County, and I would say, this is a long time in coming, I've got some letters that, uh, one of them is dated nineteen nineteen, suggesting that we make that route a, a state highway, and the other, and several others in nineteen thirty-eight, so, yes, it's been a long, long haul, uh, but I do wanna thank the commission for moving forward on this, it's really gonna be important, but, and I see by the agenda that there are some things starting to happen to, to kinda move this trade forward, so we can make that a state highway, take that liability away from the county, and I think it's the right direction to move, so I appreciate everything that you've done.
Well, and I urge you to continue to talk to your neighbor, he's down a position that he might pay to help us out.
We'll see what we can do. Uh, the other thing I was gonna say was I, and I encourage the, uh, commission to make sure that we keep the, uh, the Band-Aid that we're putting on that highway, and I really appreciate that, uh, keep that, uh, timeline fairly tight between, uh, the milling process and the resurfacing process, I think it's, uh, some serious, uh, safety concerns, and so I think that if, the tighter we can keep that, the better, the, the traveling public's going to be as far as, when it comes to safety.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is anybody else from the public wish to speak to this item? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item?
I think Rich should give a brief overview on what we're doing.
Yep, I, anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'm a close public testimony on this item. Mr. Liggett?
Yeah, so, um, since we have a good audience, and I'm sure that there's people tuning in today, which is fantastic, um, what we're gonna do is the first seven miles, uh, seven point two miles, something like that, we're gonna mill that section up of New Underwood Road, turn it back to gravel, put some, uh, base stabilization on it, and then, uh, on Otis Seal, which is like a chip seal, um, so it's really not an asphalt road anymore for that seven miles, but it's pretty bad shape, so, uh, this is a, a Band-Aid for the, for this, that road. Um, right now, there's a lot of potholes, some ruts, um, getting to be a pretty bad road. Um, so, reconstruction, uh, is, for that entire road is about sixty-six million dollars, it's a little bit outside of our budget, um, so, and then, um, nobody in the county wants to pay for that, so, uh, this is really just a Band-Aid for the, hopefully, I think we're thinking three to five-year period for what we can get for life out of that road, um, with that, that fix, so, that all, Troy?
Troy, do you have any, Dad? If you had to come forward to the microphone, please.
Troy Eastman, Highway Superintendent, yeah, the three to five-year lifespan for what we're gonna do is, uh, definitely right in that range, it could last more than that. Um, but yeah, I don't wanna say it's gonna be a ten-year deal and then fall apart, so, um, you know, it is like any other road, I mean, even paved roads can fall apart soon, so, yeah, I would say that's a fair statement.
And then, uh, we did, in the last commission meeting, lower the speed limit to forty-five miles an hour on that road, for that, that seven miles. We modified our load limits across the county to seven tons an axle, axle, and eighty thousand pound gross, so, um, we are trying to, to keep those roads in a little bit better shape, but, um, it's a challenge.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? And- No, the, well, we're fixed, this is a fix on the se- seven miles, as Mr. Liggett just pointed out.
So, it's the first seven miles in Mead County on-
Yep, on the south end.
Basically from Elk Creek-
Elk Creek Road to Pennington.
To the Pennington line.
Any other questions, comments? And or action?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, transfer of a million dollars, uh, from the twenty-twenty-five assigned funds, um, to the highway for New Underwood Road repair.
Second that.
Uh, hey, you're essentially, uh, uh, making a motion to pass this resolution?
Yes, sorry, to pass the Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen.
Any other comments, uh, to that motion? Hearing none, all of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, uh, brings us down to E three, temporary campground hearings.
Rea Crane acting as Director of Equalization, we have four temporary campground application permits that you are reviewing today. Uh, these are not new campgrounds, we do not have issue, we have not had issues with them in the past. You, we collected five thousand one hundred fifty dollars in permit fees from these four temporary campgrounds, we're just asking for approval today. We will not actually hand them a permit until we have inspected to make sure that they've met our ordinance requirements.
Questions, comments, and or action? Oh, but, I always forget that, I gotta ask for public comment, anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, uh, any commissioner questions, comments?
My only comment is for the general public, you might notice that none of the major campgrounds are on this list, and that's because all the major campgrounds in Mead County during the rally are licensed by the state of South Dakota.
Any other questions, comments, and or action on this agenda item?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five temporary campground applications.
Motion is second on the floor to approve these, uh, these applications? Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. Bring this down to E four, uh, twenty-twenty-one Dodge Ram, we have a bid opening today.
Rea Crane Auditor's Office, I did advertise for the twenty-twenty-one Dodge Ram Big Horn pickup in the Black Hills, or, yeah, Black Hills Pioneer Faith Independent in the Rapid City Journal, we have not received any bids to date.
Wow. Can we place a minimum on that?
We did not.
Since this was surplus, I would assume the only way we could keep this going would be to continue it. Ken?
Ken Clubber, State's Attorney's Office, we've never had it, I'm not sure the answer to that is to how to proceed, yes, you could continue this?
It would be, it would get us off the hook if that's what we have to do, if we'd continue this, then we could make a decision in the interim.
If you would allow me the opportunity to review and, and address that shortly.
Yeah, I think-
Just, just continue this item and see what options we have, is public auction or private sale?
Yeah, I think there's a, a provision, if you don't get any bids, that you can go to auction and take like a percentage less than what the appraised value was.
I think ninety percent.
Yeah, so, but Ken, if Ken could confirm that, the next meeting, we could make a call on that.
It'll be a quick one.
Okay, so let's just skip over this, and let's go to, uh, item E five on the agenda. Uh, this is a public hearing for the vacate relocate section line. Um, Mr. Baumiller, if you'd just come forward, we'll just have you describe what you're looking at doing, uh, I'll give you about ten minutes to describe what you're looking at doing, Mr. Baumiller. And then when I open this up to the public, I'm going to do something similar to what we did earlier, uh, and offer three minutes proponents, opponents, probably keep it fifteen minutes, uh, for both. Mr. Baumiller, what, what are we looking at?
Uh, my name's, uh, Craig Baumiller, uh, and basically, uh, the section line re- vacate relocation is, uh, um, basically, it, it does make my runway and the safer wind direction, also, it gives it more distance from structures. Um, if I move it over to the other side of the lot, um, it, it actually, um, will affect neighbors, because I'll be, you know, closer to their homes and things like that, coming in, which is still legal. Um, but where it is that has the most distance, I think on one side of it, it makes it, uh, uh, like five thousand feet to the next structure, I mean, it's a long ways in line with that runway, and on the other side, I think it's like twenty-two hundred feet, if I move it, it'll probably reduce that to, you know, under a thousand. Um, the one thing about, uh, the longer runway and people that are, uh, uh, you know, landing on these, I mean, usually you land, you have thousand-foot markers, and that's where you intend to land, uh, when you're landing, it gives you room, so you're flying well into, um, the development and not over, you know, people's houses, it gives you more altitude. Um, the other thing with, uh, uh, the benefit, uh, I guess to the county and, and everybody else about relocating that section line is to, um, you know, it offers another in and out for fire services, ambulance, a road that's actually usable, um, I mean, right now, it's a trail. Um, you know, the, uh, it'll be built to county specs, um, everything's been engineered by a state-certified engineer, um, to, to relocate that section line. You know, I, I've, you know, other, obviously, the commission, you guys have approved multiple relocations, um, of section lines, you know, in recent times, Stoneville Road and Union Center, Ralph's Way, uh, Fort Mead Way, um, and I guess we heard about the one on the gun range, you know, so, I mean, i- it's something that happens, and I'm not looking about taking a road away or vacating it, we're just trying to, uh, um, remove it, or, uh, remove and relocate it, you know, for, for benefits of, of safety, everything, I mean, I did, uh, I hear a comment about, uh, um, seat planes and things like that, the three-hundred-gallon tankers, it's like, yeah, we'll have a water system out there, we have fire hydrants, I mean, that's, that's an option, if the state's looking to have another opportunity to have a place for something like that, or a place to land on their list, I mean, I'm, I'm for that, I mean, anything to do to reduce, you know, fire concerns in our areas, um, you know, this, uh, section line relocation, I mean, this has been in the plans, nothing's moved since the beginning, um, you know, for those reasons, uh, I can move it over to one side, but it's, it's not, uh, not gonna be as, um, good for the public, so.
Thank you, Mr. Baumiller. Um, is there any of, is there anybody else that's gonna, this, I'll just open public testimony and ask for, uh, proponents to move this, is Mr. Baumiller be fitting to just, to start with the proponents in moving this section line, uh, if you'd like to come forward, please? Anyone?
I would stay there.
Many, yeah, you can, if there's questions for you, or stay close, anyway, any other, anybody wanna speak in favor of moving this section line? And let's keep it to the section line, we handled the other stuff earlier, please.
David Utter, for what, Drive in Piedmont, I live in the area, I support relocation of the section line road. So downside to the moving of that? Access for emergency services, benefit to all of us in the area? I'd better access from Rapid City or from Piedmont?
Thank you, Mr. Utter. Any other, anybody else wanna speak in favor of moving this section line, and why? Anyone else wanna speak in favor of moving this section line? Hey, I'm not gonna, I'm not seeing anybody, so I'm gonna close the proponent testimony on this, is anyone who wanna speak against moving this section line? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's, uh, Todd Batest, I live at twenty-one seventy-six Peterson Road, my property- My property adjoins the, uh, section line in question. I'm two miles south of the, uh, of where it would be diverted. Um, got, I guess, uh, several concerns. Primary concern is this work is done. This is, this has become a formality to, to ask to divert this section line. Um, that, uh, that's very disturbing to me because that, that tells me that there's a disregard for the law. Um, and it's a felony to, uh, intentionally damage highway or bridge. That's under thirty-one thirty-two one, and that, uh, says, uh, just, just to offer it for the record, uh, every person who intentionally digs up, removes, displaces, breaks, or otherwise injures or destroys any public highway, section line is considered a highway by state law, or a bridge, or any private way laid out by authority of law, or a bridge upon such way is guilty of a class six felony. So, the work is done. The evidence would support that, that a felony has, has occurred, a crime has occurred, and that, uh, that in itself very disturbing to me. Um, I spent a lot of years in law enforcement, and, uh, in my experience, when somebody disregards the law, uh, especially if they think people are looking, they're certainly going to disregard the law when they think nobody is. So, that, uh, that would be probably my biggest, my biggest problem with this situation. Um, and another concern that was brought up is the egress from, uh, from Peterson Road. So, there's not a lot of ways to, to leave Peterson Road other than Haynes Avenue. This section line is, uh, is, would be our primary egress to the west if, if there's a fire on Haynes. Fires typically in the summer move from the south to the north, so we're going to need to go north to get out if the fires in, in the field to the east of, of Haynes Avenue, or if it's coming up straight from the south. So, that is a, a serious, serious, uh, concern for all of us that live in the neighborhood, and we've, we've had fire in the area in the recent years, so it's certainly a concern. And, uh, those fires, they spread very quickly. They move with the speed of the wind, so if we have forty, fifty mile an hour gusts, we're going to have forty, fifty mile an hour fires, and, uh, we need to move very quickly. So, and then you're going to cause confusion with, uh, a diverted section line and, and everything else.
Good time, Mr. Betest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that, uh, is an opponent to moving this section line want to come forward?
Uh, my name is Marty Quinn. I live in two-one-six-eight Forest Place. I am a neighbor of Todd's, right, uh, directly to the north of him, and I have the same concerns Todd does. Um, first off, the fact that this is allowed to be put through, uh, cutting through the section line, uh, prior to everything being covered by county and state law. Another huge concern, like Todd said, is our egress out of there. We only have two egresses. The first one, like Todd said, is, uh, Peterson Road. The second is the section line, and I drive the section line quite a bit, just, just because I drive through it. I want to make sure that everything is still good, it's passable, everything is good there. And with that runway there, I've been up to it, I have looked at it, and with that runway there, it totally eliminates egress out of our community, which, uh, with fire standards within city, you take a home, you have to have more than one egress out of a home. With the community, we have to have more than one egress out of our living areas. That's law. So, this is wrong. Something has to be done. Um, this on you guys. Um, we, we're concerned about the safety and welfare of our families. We're all families that live back there, and I've seen that runway from one end to the other, and regardless of what they're saying, I know where the runway ends to the east, and it's right up to community housing. It's another community there. So, something has to be done here. It's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Any other opponents to this section line relocation?
Hello, commissioners. Michelle Marshall, one-two-zero-eight-seven Fountain Place. And, um, my concern is just also that the work has been done. Um, and not only done, but to the point of where there have been times where it was impassable, vehicle, animal, however. Um, I not only ride my horse down there, we have ATVs. Um, we also check the section lines just to see how the exits are during mud and, and whatnot, just so we know, you know, how we can, how we can get out. We also try not to tear up our section lines. Um, we try to keep them healthy so that they can be used properly. But that, um, that runway crossing there has made it, uh, there was deep ditches on each side of that that made it so that it was impassable for a vehicle, and especially after the rains that we had, it was impassable for me on my horse. I could get across one side, but I couldn't get across the other side, and I was riding a young horse. Um, he got down to his knees in the new dirt that was there, scared him, scared me. Um, we came out, and I had to ride around to get across safely. Um, that is a, that is, you know, that's our community. That's where we live. Um, I was also told that, um, there was a warrant. I don't know if that's the case. Um, I know that a deputy came out, um, as I was leaving, that deputy had arrived, um, the day that KOTA came out and, um, interviewed several people. And so, if there is actually a warrant that's in effect now, I just don't understand how something can be proceeding with that. Um, I'm not a law person, so I don't know exactly how that works, so.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. We'll address that in just a bit. I'll have the, yep, yeah. Well, let's, let's handle the public testimony first. If, I don't think we went, anyone else opposed to the relocation of the section line? And we will address the, uh, I'll have the Deputy State's Attorney address the, the, if, the allegations to damage the section line.
Brady Conway, fifteen twenty-two Brookside Lane, Piedmont. I, I think the section line should stay where it's at. There was blatant disregard for policies and procedures here, as, as far as getting everything going before this construction proceeded. Uh, possible laws being broke, and this is a possible precedence. If this is how they operate, what else is going to happen in the future once they start flying a lot of aircraft in and out of there? Is it going to be blatant disregard for all the other regulations and things like that? Uh, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Anybody else want to speak in opposition to section line relocation?
Mary Thomas, two-three-seven-nine Peterson Road. My concern is the relocated section line is actually on the south end of the runway, so not only do you have to watch for cars, you're going to have to watch for planes landing because it's right at the end, and so you've got to be aware of everything above you. Um, and then I was down there a couple of weeks ago after there was rain and everything to the east of the runway, there was water sitting there, and so if you're going to build the section line, you're going to have to raise it up, which is going to push the water someplace else, which is not going to be to the west because that's the runway, so that'll be to the east, which will impact other property owners. And then my other concern is like everybody else, the runway's already been constructed across the section line as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Anybody else want to speak in opposition? Usually not reluctant to speak.
Guys, I'll go before me, but I figured, I figured I wouldn't get any time, so I don't really prepare anything, but, uh, my name is Halboi Zorik. I own land to the east of this location.
Uh, just, I'm going to stop you just really quick. I'll stop time. For the record, uh, Commissioner Zorik has recused himself, or he's speaking as a member of the public.
Yeah, um, so, and I submitted a letter. I, I think it kind of lays it out. I, I have a lot of concerns about the drainage. I have a lot of concerns about the location of this road. A lot of water, I've, I've previously submitted the planning video of water moving through this area really hard a couple hours after a rainstorm. Um, it, uh, the, look, development's hard. I don't, I don't dispute that. The developer's clearly jumped the gun, and I think has disregarded obligations to let the county know. He's just moved forward. Um, I think moving a section line, according to my discussions with Mr. Cleberad, is you don't have then any power. You've moved the section line. There's no conditions you can put on the road. You're going to have to do those for planning if this project blows up. You've got a section line in a terrible location. Um, I think with the way this commission has done it before, like on Ralph's Way, we made the developer build it first and then entertain the relocation. On the gun control, we made them agree to conditions before you entertain the relocation. Uh, obviously, as a developer, and he doesn't know if his project's going to go, I'm not saying he should build it, but at a bare minimum, I think you need a full drainage study. Uh, you know, we've, there were discussions about getting a drainage study across his development. His engineer said it's not required on the preliminary plat, that's true, but he's now asking to move a road. We don't really have a great idea where all, how the water's going to run through this, where it's going to hit. Um, look, my land to the east, there's a drainage that comes through. It comes across Haynes though and comes through. The drainage off this land currently barely touches a corner of my ground. I'm really concerned that you're going to redirect the, the road, you're going to redirect that drainage down to twentieth, and it's going to hit those houses to the east and then go north there, so increasing drainage through some drainages that already exist there. And you don't know any of this, um, but I, I, I just don't see how he can go forward with relocating a section line for where he's got his development. I think you're going to want a full spec on the roads, a full drainage study, so you know how the water's going to get handled, and then, uh, developer's agreement that he'll do the project if, if he gets the, the relocation done. Um, so the county's not left holding the bag, or you get kind of a, a self-help build road that ends up hitting a, a lot of homeowners in the area. So, um, you know, whether his project makes sense or not, that's his call, but whether it impacts the neighbors, I'm, that's a determination I think the commissioners make, and I don't think you have enough information to take this step.
It's your time, Mr. Zorik.
Thank you.
Any other, any other opposition to moving, relocating the section line?
Me again. Bambi Arlog, two-three-eight-nine Peterson Road. Um, since the section line has already been, um, covered with the runway dirt and is impassable, um, is there, if this is not approved, can you please, um, in any way make him put it back to the way it was until it's approved or not approved, or so that it can be usable?
That would all be handled, I would assume, if, if, I'll have the State's Attorney address all these, those concerns in just a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Take notes, uh, Mr. Cleberad. Any other opposition to relocating of this section line? Your opposition of it? So, any other opposition? That'd make it easier, Mr. Baumheller. Any opposition to relocating this section line? Hearing other, no other opposition, I'll give you a quick one-minute rebuttal, one minute.
Uh, yeah, my name's Craig Baumheller again, and, um, I did not, I haven't, the original section line is there, and it's in better shape than it was before I started. I mean, it used to be two foot. Oh, sorry. The original section line is there. Um, I didn't change the elevation where my runway is on either side of that section line. Um, you know, one person that was commenting about getting stuck in her horses, she's actually, um, has charges against her for trespassing because she rides all over my property. I got witnesses, and she acts like she owns the place and, and, um, you know, as far as the drainage studies, everything has been done by a state engineer, state-certified engineer, and as, you know, fellow engineers and stuff on the board, I mean, I think that holds something. If they had a problem, I think that the state would take their license. I'm not sure how that all works, but, um, all the drainage studies have been done. Uh, we're just conveying water. I mean, it's not, uh, nothing's changed. We can build the road, um, you know, with proper, uh, culverts and everything going through there.
It's your time, Mr. Baumheller.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cleberad, I'm going to close public testimony now on this subject, on this agenda item. If there's a question from the commissioners, uh, they ask you forward, then come forward. Uh, Mr. Cleberad, there's been several allegations about, uh, a damaged section line out there. We've got, basically, we've got three subjects going on here. We've got, uh, uh, earlier we heard disagreement to the development and, and proponents to the development. Uh, that was a subject then. There's a subject of a damaged section line. Uh, what we're dealing with on this agenda is whether we relocate the section line or not, uh, which is separate from the other two agenda items, or, uh, separate from the other two items. But if you would want to dig in, there's been, uh, Sheriff West, maybe you could come forward too, in case there's a question really quick as well. Uh, uh, I don't know if we want to get too deep in the woods on this, but there has been an allegation if that, that section line has been damaged. If you could.
There was a complaint made last week. It was investigated through the sheriff's office. It was referred over to our office to review for charges. We received it yesterday. It has not yet been reviewed, as two other, uh, criminal charges would be filed. There is no warrant out despite a, a allegation. Um, the allegation is a felony, so that would go through the grand jury process, uh, prior to any charges being formally filed. So, it's in a preliminary stage. Uh, similarly with the allegations of trespass, that has been reported and investigated by the sheriff's office, so it's an ongoing investigation there as well.
Okay, so.
Um, I have a question, Ken. As you recall, we talked Thursday when this incident took place. At that time, you, uh, told me you did not believe that we could act on this section line since a complaint had been filed and pending resolution of that. Have you changed your opinion on that?
I don't think whether you take action to vacate or not affects whether or not there's a criminal investigation or a criminal charge filed. That action of, uh, destroying the road is the allegation, has already occurred. It was a road at the time, a highway at the time. Every section line is a highway by statute. Um, any changes you make today will not affect what happened before. But you could move forward with your decision to vacate the section line, and you could move forward with a separate decision to relocate, or, excuse me, to locate a highway, uh, in the path that's indicated.
Okay, and so the reason you changed your mind as to first, when you thought we couldn't even have the hearing today, and now you say we can act on it, what, why the change in philosophy?
I'm not sure the circumstances where I made a statement that you couldn't proceed. You certainly can. I mean, there, there's nothing that gets in the way of that.
Okay.
Um, the timeline that we discussed is when, is when the complaint was made, and the sheriff was just on their way out there at that time.
Was the complaint, the fact that people were not allowed to cross the section line, or the fact that the section line had been altered?
The fact that it had been altered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Uh, this, this is, the, the section, the allegations of the section line damage is out of our hands. It's, it's going to be, it's, the sheriff has dealt with it, and it's now, I guess it's up, it's between the courts and the sheriff right now. So, it's, this has nothing to do with us right now. The only thing we're going to be discussing is whether we vacate and relocate today. Uh, that, I think that pretty much covers it. Sheriff West, I don't think you have, you have anything else to add? Nope? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming forward, though. Uh, any other questions, comments from the commission?
I, I do have some questions. Um, Craig, what was the, the length of the runway that you have identified, uh, with the relocation of the section line?
Uh, five thousand feet.
And, um, in addition, uh, your, I don't know, can we pull up the plan? So, your plan is to relocate the section line to the red line, vacate the red, this portion of the yellow. Um, in your development, uh, plans, we, you show reconstructing Husker Place, um, all the way down to, I think it's the end of your property. Is that correct, the end of the green line?
Yes.
Um, and so, there's a couple, couple things in the plans that I, I saw. The, the plat didn't have curve data, so what are those curves? Do we know? Um, and does it mean the actual requirements for that? So, I didn't have that, that curve data. Um, the plat indicated it was Infinity Landing Way, and the plans say that it's Aviator Way, um, so I'm not sure.
I, I believe that was, uh, at request to the county to change that name, um, probably because there was another Infinity name in the county.
Okay, so, so.
The newest plan has that Aviator's way.
So it'll be Aviator Way is the intent. And this doesn't affect the section line, I'm just, you know, looking at all the pieces of information that are out there.
Please announce yourself and your title, please, Mr. Wazorek.
Shannon Boston, Spaceline Surveying. So I just come up just in case there's any other additional questions.
Certainly, I just wanted to have you announced for the public. So, and for me, you know, on the section line piece, if you, if you look at the overall picture of this, it doesn't, doesn't line up with the one across the way. And even the location that you kinda have it showing, it doesn't line up with the approach across the way. So, I mean, we, we try not to do that in general on our roads, just so we have, you know, approaches across from each other, things like that. We don't have, you know, we don't have zoning, we don't have a real formal planning process necessarily for, for the area. But looking at the growth in the area from Elk Creek Road to, I guess, Forest probably would be the next road down, it doesn't really provide, if we shift it over, it doesn't really provide a nice through access through there. I think that the project itself with the relocation, either relocation or non-relocation in the project itself, will increase access to the area, 'cause you're, you're essentially building a section line road from Elk Creek Road to Husker Place all the way through. Building from Haynes to the end of your property, which would connect to the existing piece on 220th that was rebuilt. There's a section on 220th that does not necessarily meet the county requirements. I think there's a wetland and some trees in there, and that's been a topic of conversation for a number of planning years since I've been on the board. So, I mean, and drainage is another, another big piece of this. I think any of these drainage things can be mitigated. You can put culverts under the runway, I am pretty sure. We, I don't know that we have a full plan of that, and that's one of my big hangups is preliminary plat requires that if we do vacate the section line and relocate, there's no way for us to, to move it back, right? So, so I, we could require maybe a, an easement through there until the project's done. You can bond the process. There's some other things that, that we might have to, you know, think about as well. When we relocated the one for the gun range, their plan at that point, when they came in to relocate, was a little bit different scenario. I think they had a little, a lot better information to put forth at that point, so...
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I have comments. Surprise.
Mm-hmm, I'm not surprised.
Okay. First, I have a question for Tanya. Did, were you asked ahead of time, or were there any permits given before he started moving all this dirt by the county for this section line? Did he come and confer, ask what our rules were, or just have at it?
Tanya Vig, Mead County Planning Director. There are permits for the whole entire project. There's South Dakota DNR permits, there's a nurse disturbance permit through Mead County. There are permits for the second, I spoke with the state, he has been informed that if there's any county, federal, or federal, or core permits, they are required from the other agencies to get the permitting in place. I do have a Corps of Engineers, they have relieved themselves. There's not a wetland that starts at that base, even though our map shows it, it does not qualify as their jurisdictional project. He is in compliance with South Dakota DNR with a SWIP, with a SWIP permit. I spoke with her this morning, he is in compliance. Moving forward, he's been directed by them what the next steps are. If it becomes an industrial site, what has to be done. The section line is ours. I do not have any improvements on the section line. The plat was, the preliminary plat was contingent on section line relocations and improvements. He has submitted the proper documents to start those, or to start the petitions and to move forward with relocation those, but to improve across it, no, I do not have any permit in my office.
But he was told...
He was told through, from my understanding, this project started June 5th of 2023 as a form of intent in front of the planning board, and they laid out the preliminary requirements of the proposed project at that time.
Okay.
And it has continued through the process and been informed of what the requirements are.
And informed that it had to come to this board?
Yes.
Until I came on the commission, I never realized how significant and what an issue a section line moving, vacation, or abandoning would be. There's been Supreme Court decisions from an airport, the Sturgis Airport, when a county, when county commissioners, way before I was here, it went all the way to the Supreme Court. In essence, I don't have a problem with a airplane fly-in subdivision if it's built right and put in. I don't, I don't think it would be a real noisy thing. I like hearing the B-1 bombers go over. I always say a little prayer when I hear the helicopter go over with life flight. But of course, I live in Sturgis, so I'm used to noise. I'm used to a lot of noise all summer long. I grew up on Junction Avenue. I've always had noise. You know, eventually, you don't even hear it. But anyway, I am concerned about safety, and I'm really concerned about following rules. Because when we sit up here, if we let one person get by without following the rules, and then expect the next hundred to follow the rules, we're not doing our job. We have to be, we have to implement it, the same for everybody. And that's following the section line. We probably made news all over the state of South Dakota about the gun range, and I think that was probably a year at least on that section line. And all of us would have rather been in the audience than up here. And that's how I feel about this today. I think the fact that you moved that section line and you worked on that section line without approval is inexcusable. And as a result, it probably has affected how I feel. It, it's given me a little trust issue. I would like RIA to put up on the board where some of this water issue is. And Mead County does not get a lot of water, but you picked a spot that kinda does. And I don't know if you know, over in Golden Valley, I don't believe they can put a basement in, correct? And that's because of water. Got a kind of a high ground level. I want the ones where it showed where we had water in the GIS. I think they were under Talbot's. I think he got them from Tanya, didn't he?
No, he gave them to me.
Oh, okay. We do have a problem there. And I believe it would not only be good for us, since a lot of what we're doing is public record, I think it would be very important for your prospective future buyers of lots to know where there possibly could be water. Because if they think there's a water problem, I would certainly wanna address it now, so that if you did start selling lots, people would know where there's a problem or that you mitigated it first. Because whatever is built, we'd like it to be successful. You're going Talbot, where are you at? Can you explain, can you show, can I ask you to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Which, there's a, she saw a picture within Mr. Wazorek's letter that indicates where there's some water. Do you, could you help us guide there, Mr. Wazorek? Commissioner Creed could identify the picture she's referencing? That's how I phrased it, the way I did.
Yeah, so these are just the GIS pictures I pulled off the GIS site myself. To show the historic kinda drainage through, you can see where it drains right through the middle of where he's putting this road. Every year, year in, year out, they all show a sign of drainage. That's to the east, that shows that drainage comes through Haynes. That's a pretty good one that shows where his, where he put in, built up the section line, built over the section line, but his, and then you can see where it's draining across his runway there. I mean, those are just, those are just off of GIS, so...
Is that the...
Yeah.
That got, got you where you wanted to go, Commissioner Creed?
Yes, and, and so, those are the problems I have.
Any other questions, comments from the commission?
So, a lot of this, and I get everybody's concerns from the public to the commission. I haven't necessarily been involved in the project other than some informational-only stuff with my own company. There is surface drainage across the entire property, I cannot argue that. We have five or six borings that have been performed throughout the entire site, and it is in his paperwork here. Unlike Golden Valley across the road, which I have drilled extensively, we've actually failed perk tests over there. We've actually told people to build a park versus a house over there. In all these borings that we have done on this project, down to a minimum of 15 feet, there is no water encounter in any of our borings. That will change year to year. I mean, this is just facts from what we've done.
And it's been dry lately.
And it has, but we also drilled the first time in 23, I do believe. And we did drill out there when there was water, surface water present, and still did not encounter groundwater anywhere from, other than at the surface, but nothing below the surface. So, I mean, that's just a fact that I, you know, just point out there. You know, I don't know what he's planning on doing for housing or any of that. I mean, most of the water that I can see on the project would be surface mitigation. I think you should probably plan for, you know, drain tile or something of that nature, you know, to, if we do have a wet year out there, as it being kind of a wetter area. But, I mean, we've drilled it twice in two different seasons and kinda come up with the same amount of data.
Thank you.
So, but I would ask, you know, if, if we're worried about stuff like that moving forward, whether we relocate this, agree to relocate it or not. You know, I have talked to Craig, he has reached out to me a little bit. How does he proceed with a project if he's worried he can't get something done in that nature? I'm a big factor, a proponent of safety, and in looking at the relocation of that, giving him a longer runway and allowing him not to fly over somebody's property, I mean, I'm a huge fan of something like that. I mean, I wouldn't want somebody, you know, within 500 feet of my house or...
No.
So I, I mean, I'm just asking questions, you know, being new to this and not being on a section line relocation or anything like that going forward, so...
The process in, Deputy Cleberad, if, if I say something wrong, please correct me. If, if this is voted down, we deny it, Mr. Baumhiller, if he so chooses, could start the project, process over immediately. So given, he'd have to get signatures, he'd have to send the letters out as he, as he previously did. And so I suspect it could be back on our agenda within a month, if that, if this is voted down. If this is, I guess that's, I think that's answering your question, basically. If this, if he would decide to pull this for any reason, which he could do up until the point of us voting, I've discussed this with Mr. Baumhiller. He called me and asked me these questions, and him and I had a personal conversation. If he decides to pull it, which he could do up to any point before we vote, take action and vote, if there's a motion on the floor, I suspect he would not be able to interrupt that motion. And, and he'd have to, so therefore, he could pull it, but that would, again, he'd be back in the very beginning of the section line removal process. He'd have to start that over. There would be an option that the board could continue this. And then that would, that would just continue the hearing. That'd be the three options for the day, is that correct, Mr. Cleberad? Yes, thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Today's request was to vacate, relocate a portion of the unimproved section line. It was not to construct a portion of a section line, is that correct?
That is correct. We're only dealing with the relocation, vacation, relocation. So therefore, if this should pass and we decide to relocate it, Mr. Baumhiller is going to have to come back before the planning board, I suspect, as soon as they could get him on the agenda, and ask to improve that section line. Again, is that correct, Mr. Cleberad?
Fourth chair.
Yeah.
Yes and no. You're vacating the section line, you are locating a highway. It's not going to be a section line highway, 'cause there is no such animal after you move it. The section line exists only along the straight lines.
But we're not making...
But you would have to come back to, to build an improvement to put in a road.
We're not making the decision to improve it, nor is that on the agenda.
Correct.
So you cannot today.
Correct.
You have a question, Mr. Baumhiller?
Actually, I just, if I could respond to Doreen just a little bit.
Sure.
You know, as far as the, I didn't change anything on the section line in between there, you know, so I left, I didn't move the section line that was already there, it's still there. And I, I just wanna explain that, I'm sure you've been out there. I talked to Tanya here the other day too, and, you know, I don't know too many people that, you know, drive a car down a section line and continuing on up to Peterson Road, that's like a hill.
Oh, I was down there, yeah, I saw that.
And I've never, you know, tried to make it over it or whatever. But that being said, I mean, I do own the property on both sides of it, and yes, I did go ahead on each side of it. I mean, obviously, I was hoping that that would work out, but if it doesn't, I can still use 2,500 feet of that, you know, so I don't, I didn't move the original section line there.
But, but, but you were on it. Troy, Troy said you, you crossed it and you did work on it.
Mr. Cleberad, could you...
I wonder if Troy could come up since he's been there.
If there's some advice you should give, Mr....
I don't represent Mr. Baumhiller.
No, I understand that, but these are possible charges pending.
There are possible charges pending. I think everyone's familiar with the constitutional, the Fifth Amendment. Anything you say here is a public statement. It's not under oath or anything, but it is a public statement, so...
And that's all I meant.
How you proceed is up to you.
Sure, thank you.
Oh, I guess, okay, we better not talk about it.
Any other questions, comments from the commission on this relocation?
I guess I'm, I'm not, without the drainage and the layout of all of this stuff, I mean, there's a, this is a substantial piece of how this is gonna flow through. And I, I know that for the last two years, that's one of the biggest conversations that anybody's had, is the drainage across that property and how it gets from point A to point B. You're dealing with a couple hundred acres of drainage here from, you know, where it starts, it's 200 CFS to 400 CFS depending on where that, that can, two streams come together. So I think that's, that's something to be, having a... you know, having a, in a good, solid place, I, I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision on moving the section line or vacating a section line. I, I'm not, I, I kind of agree, I'm, I'm not opposed to the additional runway length, I'm not opposed to the project. My, my concerns are, you know, how does this line up with the, the other properties, how does it line up? Uh, I think that there's some, some missing data on the plat, still, I think there's some, uh, it's just not a super clean, uh, transition at this point, and I think that, um, I'd like to see an actual, you know, full plan, uh, full engineering design of, now, and I know that you're gonna, that's what you say, but, once we start putting lots in there, how does that affect and where does that drainage go? Um, because it does, it's going to affect how it goes under the road, the runway, and how it gets across the property, and the issue that I see with the, with that particular piece of property is it's flat, right, so, the water slows down, uh, it's gonna pool, we're gonna see all of those things on the surface. The clay doesn't let it in, you know, so you're gonna see all that stuff, which usually indicates that, um, it's always a flooding area, but how we mitigate that and not cause a problem in the future is, is really my, my concern.
Uh, yeah, and just to address that a little bit, um, I guess, um, there are contours or ditches or things like that throughout the roads, you know, to mitigate all those things. I mean, I understand, you know, on your, uh, on lot layout, um, you know, we have, uh, brought in multiple drainage plans, um, and I don't, uh, we've, we've met every ordinance. You know, I don't know who the county recommends me to hire as an engineer, like, who you trust, 'cause I mean, you know, I don't know, I need that recommendation, I guess, at this point, because, I mean, we've been trying to, I mean, we have a stack of paperwork this high of engineering, and, um, you know, obviously I, I hired an engineer because I want things to be done right. And, and that's kind of where, I don't know where to go from here, uh, as far as that, so if you have any recommendations on engineering firms that the county's worked with, or recommend, I mean, I need that, so.
Are there any other questions, comments for, from the commission? I, I guess I, I haven't spoke much, um, I, I will, I, from what I'm hearing from the commission and, and this is the position I'm in, from what Rich just said, I, I, I gather Rich isn't, I'll just say, I'm not comfortable with what I've seen on these drainage plans, I, I've even spoke to you personally, um, and, and expressed that. Now, there's ways we can, I think there's, we could probably work some of this stuff out, there's no doubt about that. Uh, today, probably not, but, uh, we could probably work some of this stuff out, what, what my concern is, is if the relocation, which you're requesting us to do is relocate the section line in a spot that is not a better spot than what it currently is. If it was, if it were to stay there and a road would be built, it's a better spot currently. I think the drainage issue to where you're asking it to be moved to is, is worse. I'm not an engineer, but the way I look at, I, I did lay eyes on the property from what I can see by the maps, it, it, it puts it in a worse spot. My concern then, if something should happen to this project, um, if, if for any reason the final plat fails, if you throw up your hands and say, "I'm done", then we've, we're stuck with the section line in a spot that's not ideal. And that's my concern from the county. So, we're also stuck, even if, if that road were to go there, and that's where we'd have to build the road, because that's where the section line is, uh, we are dealing with some drainage issues, which I haven't seen, I, I know they worked on some drainage things, but they haven't done it specifically up against a road there, that I've seen. Mr. Bob Miller, please, I'm, I'm just stating my concerns. But that's where it lies, the project itself, there's, there's things that, that have been brought up that are concerns, but I think can be worked with, I, I appreciate your vision, there's no doubt about that, this is, this is something different, uh, could be a neat project. So, as we sit today, I'm uncomfortable, because there is no way of putting that section line back. There's no way of putting that back, if we move it today. Excuse me, there is a way, but that's, it's, it's complicated. So, as Rich mentioned, if there could be some agreements, some easements, um, I, I don't even know where to go, I mean, it's, this is stuff that, that would all have to be sat down and discussed. Then it makes me a little more comfortable, because then that section line could go back, because there's a lot of factors that, that lead to projects not being finished, I mean, developers get tired of the project, they move on. The drainage plan, we requested full drainage plan before final, we passed the preliminary, but preliminary is just that, that's just to start the ball rolling. Unfortunately, the section line is a big piece to your development, so you have to know, so I, I, I get your, where you're sitting, you have to know that this could be moved before you're, otherwise you're gonna do something different with this project, or you're, maybe just get rid of it, I don't know what, that's, that's up to you. But, so I, I, I do sympathize with you, because there has to be something done here to get you to keep going with this project, or a project, whether a decision's gonna help you either way. So, right today, I am a little uncomfortable, I haven't seen the full drainage, I know you've worked with an engineer, but it, it still hasn't put it up against what that road does, up against that road. Uh, I have been concerned with, with the drainage's two other properties, and we haven't seen that yet, so that, that could all lead to the final plat being not approved, and then now we got a section line that's not in an ideal location. But I hope you understand that, what we're kind of dealing with here, as well. So, I don't know what the options of the commission are, like I said, we do have, uh, one option would be to continue, which would continue this hearing. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make a motion, being the chair, but, uh, maybe there's some things we could talk about and work out in the meantime. Uh, the other option, one option would be deny it, one option is to approve it, but, uh, that's, that's what we have before us today.
So if we did make a motion and agree to continue this, would that not require him to have to go out and start from scratch?
That, that is correct, he would be, he would just be continuing the hearing, he would not have to send the letters, uh, just, we could set a date to what, whatever date the, that, is that correct, Mr. Cleverhead?
I do believe that's what we did with the gun range section line, is we continued that one for a number of months.
Yes, and I, I also will add, Rich brought up the, the gun range, this is a very unique ask. Since I've been on the board, we have never relocated a section line to something that was not improved. Now, the gun range came before I was on the board, but they did have a full draft of plans that they presented to the board, as far as the drainage, the culvert sizes, all of that, that was going through that new section line.
I mean, we have submitted full plans on the whole thing.
Sure, so I think it would, and I don't want to argue with you here, because I, 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 maybe it's something that I missed, when I was looking at this. Uh, maybe it's something that we could do better communicating, but I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm saying, right now as I sit, I am uncomfortable moving that section line. That's, that's, I'm just being straight up with you, right now, today.
So, Craig, what's the possibility of moving it to line up with the approach across the road, and/or moving it to the quarter section, the quarter line?
Could you show me on the, on the screen? Basically, the, uh, are you talking about the, was it east property line?
Yeah, so-
I would move it there.
I mean, that, 'cause when I look at the development of this area, right, and I'm not looking necessarily today, I know you're doing a development, but in the fifty-year window, what does that look like for that development, how does that tie together? And, and as, you know, Gary said, if we move it, if it does move, does it make it better for the public, I mean, that's, that's really the point of this whole, whole thing. One hand, yes, it does, because it brings development to the area, it brings, uh, tax revenue in, um, we have growth, we have a, a nice subdivision in there. Um, we have a, a niche thing that can happen through the county. Uh, the flip side is that we have, you know, a section line that doesn't line up with the one across the road, so, for me, that's where I'm looking is, you know, how does this line up with lots? You know, maybe at some point, uh, the property on the other side's gonna split, and, and that, you know, is something that could happen. Fifty years from now, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes perfect sense to me, I mean, honestly, I think it makes more sense than where it is. You know, where it is. 'Cause then it lines up with the other property lines there, so.
It, it's either that or, or with, at least with the, the one across the road, because we run into that all the time where we deny approaches just for that reason, so. I don't want to be the one that approves it because of that.
I'm, I'm ready for action, if you'd like to give it.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this, uh, to, there, next hearing, and next one is two weeks? To the June tenth meeting, uh, so we can get some, some questions answered, and, uh, maybe have some offline conversations, Craig, on location.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to continue this hearing until our June tenth meeting. Is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, thank you, and thank you for everyone for coming, let's take about a ten, fifteen minute break.
So I-
So I...
Uh, puts us... Puts us on the agenda of the planning department. Uh, we do need to go back to that, let's just start, let's just go to the planning department. Commissioner Wazorek is going to have to leave here at noon, I'd prefer he was here through planning, uh, being his liaison of that department. Um, brings us to F1 on the agenda, which is just your report.
Um, everything's kind of just maintaining permits are up, building, um, all permits are up, the only thing that we've been really working on-
We get that door shut, please.
Um, is two TIF districts, the TIF for AR Ranches, and we're working for a future one in North Haynes, they're both being worked through right now. Um, AR Ranch has submitted their second, um, application and plans for review, um, and then A, um, North Haynes, Max Rook and I are working on the boundary map and the ownership with the dollar amounts, and that will hopefully get sent after them at the end of the week to Mr. Morris. Still working through the large projects, nothing's changed. Other than that, um, we still have my add out for an assistant planner, um, hopefully we have two more interviews this week, and hopefully can make a selection if they work out.
Is there any questions on, uh, Ms. Vig's, uh, report? If not, let's move down to F2 on the agenda, three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction discussion, City of Sturgis and Meade County.
Our crews don't have rollers on them.
We, we don't act like that when we come to the city stuff.
You guys got me excited with the last hours.
I, I guess so, yeah, wow. Uh, Ms. Vig, uh, if you'd prefer to go first, or Mr. Bush, it doesn't-
I could just have Mr. Bush.
Okay, if you'd like to just explain what we're doing here, that'd be great.
Perfect, uh, thank you Commissioners, we appreciate it. Uh, what's up for your consideration-
Please, just announce yourself.
Oh, Rick, Rick Bush, the Public Works Director for the City of Sturgis.
Thank you.
Uh, what's up for your consideration today is a amendment to the, uh, existing three mile, uh, policy agreement. Uh, we did have a, uh, group of developers petition the city to de-annex, uh, parcel of land that's located, uh, directly north of the Woodill Field, uh, on the north side of Sly Hill Road. Uh, that de-annexation did get approved by the, uh, City of Sturgis and has subsequently been filed, uh, so with that, that area now not being in the city limits has to either go into Area 1 or Area 2. Uh, part of the reason that the City of Sturgis, uh, agreed with the de-annexation is, is the fact that we can't provide services there, given the location and the topography, uh, we'll never get sewer there, water is above what elevation we can get water to, um, the condition of Sly Hill Road, of course, we would not entertain any developer digging through that, given the past history of it and the failures on it. Um, the city is going to retain all ownership of, of Sly Hill, but the, the prop, property directly to the north of it, uh, has been de-annexed and, and is now back in, uh, the county's jurisdiction, so with that, it, it only makes sense that, uh, this property would be under jurisdiction of the county, uh, within this agreement, uh, because that was the reason why, why we de-annexed it. Uh, and, and I forget off the top of my head, was it like forty, forty-some acres of, of property? Uh, and, and I believe that's the only change we're looking to make through this amendment.
Okay, so to be clear, what we have before us today is, is, uh, the de-annexation has already happened, that was the City of Sturgis decision.
Correct.
Yes, yes, uh, so it's basically whether to put this in ETAEJ, Area 1 or 2. Uh, Ms. Vig, could you give a brief overview of what the differences are for us, so we can understand that?
Sorry, I thought it was on. Area 1 is pink, which is with, um, uh, joins the city limits of City of Sturgis, that is their jurisdictional for plating power. Um, they, they receive the plaits, um, all the engineering submitted, it adheres to their policies, they send it to Meade County for review, we review the po, their, their plating, the engineering and also, and it's supplied comments to them. Um, it gets approved by the City of Sturgis, and then we still receive building permits and subject permits to Meade County. Um, Area 2 is reversed, um, Meade County, all the planning or all the plaits go through the county with all of our stipulations to ordinance 2010, it's all built to a county standard, and we submit that into City of Sturgis for their review also, in case something they might see a difference that they have, um, within their area, they could see a growth that they would like us to add something or request something through the developer, and then the county authorizes and issues all the permitting through Area 2, the Tan area.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Wazorek, you're the planning chair, do you have anything to add to this? You guys saw this at your last meeting, I believe?
Yeah, the, the annexation, the county didn't have any say in, um, I, I did vote against, um, this to make sure it wasn't on the consent calendar, because I thought the commission should take a look at this issue. Um, I'm not sure I understand the city not wanting to take control of stuff immediately adjacent to the city or maybe provide in more detail, um, but I, like, I think Tanya has laid out the difference between the areas and done it accurately. It is, has no desire to actually, um, do the plating in that area, I mean, at least, you know, the county will make sure it's done right.
Uh, next question, I know that, that contains Sly Hill Road, and that's been a contentious issue between the county and the city, obviously, it's, it comes up, what, there's, there's nothing, this has nothing to do with roads.
Correct.
That's correct, we, um, so the city currently has annexed on the other side as well, so, I mean, technically, you know, in that jurisdictional agreement, that piece still stays with you guys. Um, we are working through those agreements now with the City of Sturgis.
Any other questions, comments? And or action?
Your request is for Area 2, is that correct? Um, not Area 1, so basically you would-
Correct, correct.
You'd just be notified when there's something that happens.
Correct, I, I mean, in, in, in the, the, to, to address Mr. Wazorek, I mean, the, the thought process behind that is, is, is everything within Area 1 is built to city standards, which includes curb gutter, asphalt, uh, sidewalks, storm drain, none of that exists, and, and there's nothing to hook into, so it, it actually, I mean, if, if, if we retain plating jurisdiction of this, all we're going to do is say, hey, it's got to be built to county standards, either way the permitting comes through the county, we just thought it made more sense. Uh, you guys are more, uh, up to speed on the county standards than the city is, as far as going out and inspecting drain fields and, and your county road specifications and all those things, it, it just made logical sense to, uh, put it in Area 2.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the three mile jurisdiction, uh, extraterritorial jurisdiction agreement, um, moving that de-annex portion to Area 2.
Motion is second on the floor to, uh, move this to Area 2. Any discussion to that motion?
Um, so to answer your question, uh, previously when we were in the city of the limits, we did approach the city based on our, our, that's why we do have a preliminary plan in place, we have, um, engineered road designs, uh, water, everything, so, so we started that process, and then this process came about, so we've kind of in a sense put all that on halt and waiting for this to take place, and we plan to move forward here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waznissa. Uh, we do have a motion and second on the floor, so let's address the vote on that before we ask any more questions not pertaining to the motion. Uh, any other discussion to the motion, which is to move this to ETJ, Area 2? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Uh, this brings us down to, uh, F3 within our, our agenda, it's a section line improvement, uh, section line comments to section 3 and 4, townships 2 north, 6 east.
Mr. Jimmy Shad, uh, has requested to me to improve a section line right about 28 foot wide with gravel surface, approximately thirteen, 1,320 feet length, to access 160 acres to build a home site. Um, the road will connect, the road will connect to the existing Meadowview Courts, and will be incorporated Canyon Place Road District for maintenance. existing Meadowview courts and will be incorporated Canyon Place Road District for maintenance. Um, we, there's the packets here, um, he did the, proceeded the process correctly. Um, we did receive a letter from the Road District in support that it would be within their jurisdiction. Um, he has gone out for, we're here to, to ask for approval or to improve the section line proceeding, to proceed with engineering plans, cost, construction and any permits and to secure a financial bond or, um, charity bond or 130% of the project. So we're just wanna know if you approve the project before he goes out and spends the engineering cost on that project.
Mr. Shad, I presume?
Correct.
Do you have anything to add?
Um...
And please identify yourself as your...
Yep, I'm Jimmy Shad.
Thank you.
Yep. I do not, no.
Hey, well, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Wazorik, do you have anything to add from planning?
Uh, no, the only, uh, item I'd want to point out is when he hits his property line, that's Forest Service on the west side, so he's gonna have to go and kind of bear into his property to maintain.
So, y- your request is for a section line improvement and it's not, um, not a private access or anything like that, right? Or just kinda a section line improvement?
That's correct.
So it's the yellow line is what we're asking.
Any other questions, comments from the Commission? And or action?
I'll second.
Okay, I assume, uh, Ms. Vig and I visited about this, it would, yeah, the proof, uh, based on ordinance 10 and, and we, we wanna probably be specific on the 28-foot road width, is that correct, Ms. Vig? Would that would be okay to add that? Okay. Uh, motion is second and that'd be okay with you as well?
Yeah, that's, and, and that's how it was indicated with the section.
Okay. Motion is second on the floor. Uh, is there any other discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go back to item, uh, E4 on the agenda, just, uh, going back real quick, clean this up, uh, about the 21 Dodge Ram bid opening.
Ken Cleberhead, State's Attorney's Office, thanks for allowing me the time to take a look at the statutes. 613-5 states that if no bids are received, the governing board may have the surplus property reappraised or may, within 12 months thereafter, sell the property at private sale for not less than 90% of the appraised value without further publication or appraisal. And of course, there are limitations on, uh, county personnel participating in private sale. So, that's the options that the board has at this point. The reappraisal would start all, start everything all over.
And we cannot continue this?
No. It called for a set time to make bids, no, none were received, cannot extend that time.
So we have two options?
Start over?
Or, or three.
With the reappraisal?
Yep, okay.
Um, you could take it off of surplus and, you know, the, returns to Meade County property as well.
That's, that's what I figured the third one was.
Yeah. Well, or we could have Ben added to a surplus auction, too.
Yep.
We're gonna do a surplus auction.
Yes.
Your mic's not on.
Pickups get bought a lot on that at a decent price. But I mean, we can put a minimum on it? Oh.
Well, it's gonna need to come back in front of us, um, with the options and I think one of the options we probably should look at is whether Ben's gonna do a surplus auction anyway, whether we should...
Wonder if we just simply advertise it at what we want for a price?
That's an option, too. That was among the options that...
Yeah.
At no less than 90% of the present appraised.
Yeah.
So first offer received at minimum amount.
When you say present appraised, Ken, do you mean the, the current opinions of value?
Correct. Yeah, we had, we had the three people do the, their opinions that was previously posted, take the average of that and 90%.
And did they look up the Kelly Blue Book or whatever?
Well, the appraisal would be probably, they probably looked at all of that, I would assume. Whoever, yeah, whoever inspected it and appraised it, probably, I assume they would have taken into consider that, in that in consideration.
Are you interested?
I didn't think there was any damage, is there?
There is some damage in it. Um, it's minor.
We can only go as low, if we wanna sell it outright, we can only go, like, I'm understanding, Mr. Cleberhead, we can only go as low as 90% of the appraised value. So that's as low as we can go. So, that would, whether that's takes into, whatever that takes into consideration, it's 90% of the appraised value, as low as we can go. So we have a couple options we need action on. I guess if we do nothing, it would remain Meade County's property, correct?
Well, we have to take it off.
We'd have to take it off surplus.
I, I, I'm not sure we can, can we take other action today or does it have to come back in front of us?
Um, you could take the actions allowed by statute. There's no bids are received. You could, uh, order a reappraisal or you could order it up for private sale at no less than 90%.
We could...
Because those are the statutory options that are there.
We have to do that today or we could make that call next?
You can make that call at a later meeting.
Okay.
At a later meeting, you could unsurplus it.
That's why I asked if we could just continue it, but that's...
No, you just can't continue, you gotta, um, we have no bids, we can take no actions on the sale, other than authorizing the reappraisal or authorizing the private sale.
So proper motion would, but how do you, we're asking, you said we could make a decision at our next meeting, so that's a continuing...
Having, having received no bids, we would request that this be put on the next agenda item for consideration of further disposal of the, or further handling of the property.
Someone wanna make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
It's basically continue, but that's fine.
I, I'll make a, I'll make a motion, as we received no bids, to, um, have it, uh, on the next meeting with the options laid out, uh, so the Commission can make a determination of how to proceed.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Uh, Commissioner Sever, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion is second on the floor to put this on our agenda item for next meeting with our options. Uh, discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings us to Treasurer. There she is.
On page one.
I know.
Good afternoon, Robin Schreick, Meade County Treasurer. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to have a time to visit with you about what's happening down in the Treasurer's office. It has been pretty chaotic down there the last few weeks. Um, we had visited a couple of months ago with the new 605 Drive software coming in, how much time it's taken us to get all the work done that we need to get done and also balance at night. Many of us are here, our, all the office staff down there are there. No, we don't get out before, I would say, 5:30 each night. Nine times out of 10, we're there until quarter to 6:00, trying to balance out and get everything done. When I'm asking the Commission to consider it, back in, a couple of months ago, we talked about shutting down the Treasurer's office at 4:30. So then that gives us enough time to balance and do phone calls. Right now, when we do do motor V transactions with anybody that's up at the front counter, we are also answering phones. Um, back to the motor vehicle, we're finding that a lot of things are not completed in the system, such as if the dealership happens to put something into the system on their end, we're having to correct some things. Prime example, yesterday, another incident that happened is many people that have driver's li- I shouldn't say many, but some people that have driver's licenses in the state of South Dakota, they didn't come over into the new motor vehicle system. That being the case, we have to stop everything, recreate them in the system, take a photocopy of their driver's license because the state of South Dakota wants documentation on that. So that takes an extra 10 minutes to do that. Just on Friday, I had five alone and that was just me. Um, yesterday I had four that I had to do. Um, also, we're finding out that if you would come in, you have several vehicles in your fleet, not all of them are showing up in your fleet. So we have to then dig further in there, whether it's with a title number, a plate number, to try to find out why we're not seeing it on the fleet. So that does also take up time. Once again, we have been a full court press down there ever since the new system. We have limited our overtime hours, we have adjusted to those, meaning that we realize that there was a learning curve on that and a, a lot of us did not take overtime because of the fact that we knew there was a learning curve. Now we're seeing that it's taken us that 45 minutes to an hour to balance. So I'm asking that we look at closing down at 4:30. Once again, I need to add this, too. Since the new system, we have been down one person in the Treasurer's, um, front line. We did have a recent hire, that person did not work out for us, so we are once again looking for another person. But for the time being, I would like to cons- have the board consider closing down at 4:30 to allow us enough time to get our things done, so we're not here late at night.
Would your hours still be at 8, starting at 8?
Yes.
Yes, the, the, it'd be open to pub- you're, you're asking to close it at 4:30 to the public, is what you're asking?
Correct.
And, and there's a number of Treasurer's offices through the state that have modified their hours.
Yes, and I have those. That's Brookings, Butte, Brule, Bonham, Lyman, Beetle, Falk, Potter, Clay, Bennett, Han, McCook and Grant.
Um, and just so, I mean, this is a, a state function that has created more paperwork and, and all of the things that, uh, happen during the day. So it's a requirement from the state that we switch to 605, is it Drive 605 or 605?
605 Drive, yes, that is correct.
And when we switch to that, that created additional workload for you guys. Um, you can't close at, at 5:00 and get everything done. Um, so in order to reduce time, time at the office, the overtime, uh, within the area as well, uh, your request is 4:30, you're still probably gonna be here after 5:00, be my guest. Um, so the public hours are gonna be 8:00 to 4:30 and then your hours will still be 8:00 to 5:00, uh, generally.
Yes.
Thank you for, I mean...
Uh, uh, yeah, as you may recall, I said it, I sat in on, uh, some of the Treasurer's sessions down there at the Spring Workshop and I would say it's caused pandemonium across the state. Which leads me to ask you, also, I see, I saw a story that the state had been charging you guys the wrong number on commercial vehicles. Has that problem, have you had people calling you on that now, too?
No, that has not come up in phone calls at our office. Tomorrow I will be in workshop in Pier. I don't know if that will be addressed at that time or not.
Okay. Well, I believe in, until Pier gets their software ironed out and all the kinks out, the Treasurer's office should, should close at, at least for three months to see what happens. But, and, and you did ask about 8:00. I think Robin always opens the window as soon as she gets in and I think a lot of people have learned they can sneak in ahead of 8:00. He's been living here.
I was gonna ask, is 4:30 your late, or 4:30 good enough or do you need 4:00? I mean, you wanna try 4:30 and if it's still a problem?
I would like to try 4:30. I don't, I will work hard, you know, I, I just, I hate to jump to 4:00. I wanna have a little wiggle room. I'm hoping that once we get another person down there hired in the front line and we get 605 Drive running smoothly in three months, that...
Or whatever, that, you know, that just came up.
Right. I'm hoping, but as of right now, we're, we're full court press.
Any other questions, comments, uh, or action on this?
I'll make a motion to modify the Treasurer's hours from 8:00 to 4:30 for the public.
Three months.
Um, I, I don't know how long it's gonna take.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not saying, I think we should tie a date to it. If she has to come back, she has to come back, but I think we should. Everybody knows this is a temporary. Motion for the three months.
Um, yes, so for, to the end of July.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion is second on the floor to close the Treasurer's office at 4:30 to the public until the end of July. Uh, is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
I will work with, um, IT to get that posted out on a Facebook post and get that on our website.
Might hang some signs up for something.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you for your consideration. I greatly appreciate this.
Uh, brings us down to the Auditor. Any questions on the overtime report by department? Wanna just display that quick? Any questions, comments on that? Any questions on H2, the budget expense and revenue reports? Questions, comments on H2? Uh, H3, Meade County Deceased Debtors. Uh, this is a, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Chris Little, Meade County Deputy Auditor. Um, the Auditor's office is seeking approval from the Commissioners to write off the debt of two deceased individuals' accounts. Um, you can see, um, neither have any poor liens against them, neither have any probate. Um, their fines are from, uh, court-appointed attorneys. We're asking that you would allow us to write them off.
Any questions, comments from Ms. Little?
How long have these been carried?
Um, they were passed in 2021 and, um, I was just notified that from the probation officer that vendor had, had passed, but he didn't give me a date.
Any questions, comments and or action?
Make a motion to write them off.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor to remove these debtors from Meade County. Uh, is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Bring us down to Highway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, actually, he said he'd probably, probably even, he would reduce it.
Troy Usman, Highway Superintendent. The first agenda item is the Joint Powers Maintenance and Encroachment Agreement with the DOT. Uh, this is for the I-90 Exit 34 to Exit 37 project that's coming up by the National Cemetery. We've had this on the agenda here, I don't know, it must've been a month and a half, two months ago, and we made some adjustments to the agreement, just to clarify and clear up a few things.
Yeah, he's got a...
Oh, I tell but...
Go ahead, Troy. Yep, uh, they, uh, yeah, like I said, we had to make a few changes, whatever, clear a few things up. There was several things that, uh, popped up, um, since the first agreement came out and, uh, those have all been clarified. We, uh, had to fix some drainage issues, also needed to identify what we're gonna do with the detour stuff and that is gonna be in a sec- separate agreement once, uh, yeah, once the project begins, it's, uh, yeah, they have, we have terms where we've talked about it, but it's not like set in stone, like the dates and this and that yet, until the bid, the project gets bid, which is gonna be this fall. And they're planning on working through the winter on it and the first... and the first, first phase of that will be going underneath the interstate with a new, uh, storm sewer, storm drain, which is a very large pipe. And, um.
Go ahead, Troy.
Okay, the, uh, other part of the agreement, the drainage that I, we were concerned about, that we had to make some adjustments with the pipe to accommodate a fifty-year event. And just due to the, the way that it lays out, um, we agreed that three arch pipes would be better. It's an upcharge for us, but versus having four round pipes, three arch pipes are actually, can carry enough water and it's, you know, one less pipe to deal with, actually two less, because they would have had to have five versus three. So we agreed to pay the, whatever, twenty-six hundred dollars, I believe it was, to, to do this, um, to make the flow better and work for us. And then they agreed, everything new with the road, they're gonna get rid of the frontage road there, um, along, uh, railroad tracks that's currently there, it's gonna be rerouted further west and all that stuff is gonna be paved.
Any other, uh, Commissioner Leggett or Severn, do you have anything to add as liaisons this?
So looking at the, the pipe, so one of the things, the, the pipe cost, um, this is the, their estimate at that pipe cost, so it could be more, it could be less, is that correct?
Right, yes.
Um, their, their design was for a ten-year event and I think that meets their, their handbook, uh, their standard, standard manual. Um, Troy said that he would rather have a fifty-year event pass under the road, so we weren't overtopping and that's the, the reason for the increase, which is currently at twenty-two sixty, uh, two thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, it'll be all arch pipe or arch RCP, um, instead of CNP. So I think it's, I think it's well worth the, the two thousand dollars to have that pipe in the right location and the right sizing. Um, everything else in the agreement, you were agreeable to now? I know that, you know, you weren't agreeable to a number of things to start.
Yeah, we went back and forth several times and a lot of meetings and, um, you know, changes, but yeah, so that we've worked everything out with the DOT.
These will be maintained, so they'll be built by the DOT and maintained by Mead County. Um, but we're currently, we are maintaining those roads anyway.
Right.
This is just a, a different, um, set of roads to maintain. Uh, it will be asphalt instead of gravel, currently we have gravel road. Um, so there's additional cost in, in the fifty-year event, but probably a good idea. I, I agree with it.
Yeah, no, I, the, the changes I saw, uh, definitely make me feel more comfortable with it, so.
Any other questions, comments on this interaction?
The term right here. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement between the DOT, South Dakota DOT and Mead County for the project IM zero nine zero one, one ninety-eight, thirty-two, PCN zero six.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to approve this joint powers maintenance agreement. Any discussion to that motion?
You said that they were looking at bidding this project late, or this year still?
Mm-hmm.
I haven't seen the plans come out yet, but I.
Yeah, I don't believe until, um, you know, we have this agreement and I don't know if there's other agreements involved yet, but it'll be coming up soon.
Any more discussion to the motion to, to pass this agreement? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Uh, brings it down to I two, traffic county analysis, any questions or comments on that? Ironically, you guys picked two very unique and different roads for this one, Elk Vale and Red Scaffold Road. I'd say that's probably as different as.
I thought that too.
But, uh, no, they're always interesting. Any other questions, comments on that? Uh, let's move down to I three, resolution for invasive weed funding.
Actually, there, there was more cards on Red Scaffold than I anticipated.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, Red Scaffold just got missed the last one.
Been on last, the last report, but I missed it and didn't get it put on there, so that's why it's there, but.
But it's like two miles long.
Yeah.
Mr. Jagum, would you please, uh, identify yourself?
Yes, Nathan Jagum, Assistant Highway Superintendent and Weed and Pest Supervisor. Uh, just to give a little background, um, typically in the spring and fall of the year, we kind of meet with the local, um, agencies and counties and discuss, um, hills or hills-wide, um, issues for noxious weed control, um, this year. Um, as with, most of you know, the federal government has been, um, turned over a little bit and some, some pots have been stirred and with that, um, our funding for noxious weed control in the Black Hills has been completely cut. Um, not just us as a county, but, um, the Forest Service and their contracts that they have with, um, other agencies and along with all the other counties. Um, there's no federal funding for noxious weed control this year, so us as a group of counties and, and individuals have expressed our concern, um, about the lack of funding and how far it'll set us back. And so, um, we devised a plan to put together this resolution that was drafted by the Pennington County, um, State's Attorney, I believe, um, to pass around and have hopefully support from the county's commissioners, um, so we can ga- gather support and then forward this on to our legislative, um, voices and see if we can maybe shake some funding loose, um, to come back down to the forest. Um, as you know, they are talking about ramping up the timber sales, um, and those timber sales produce an amount of, um, sale tickets and a portion of those sale tickets are supposed to come back to the forest to, to deal with the disturbance that they cause when they, when they do the logging. And right now, those funds are not being allocated back to the forest, they're being used for other, um, expenditures. So that's what the KV, Canute and Vanderbilt funding is, is tied to. And so we're just asking that those dollars please come back to the forest and get put to the use that they should. So, um, just asking for your support as a commission to, to back us in this.
Has this passed any other county?
Yes, it's, it's making its way through, I believe Pennington County did and it's kind of ma- you guys are all kind of on the same, um, schedule, so I think I saw Lawrence County did it either this morning or yesterday. Pennington County, I think, maybe last week and then Custer Fall River and I think the counties in Wyoming were also, um, looking at, at pursuing this as well.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments, interaction?
I make a motion to approve the resolution in support of the funding.
Motion is second on the floor to approve this resolution. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jagum.
Thank you.
Brings us down to I four. Hit award, magnesium chloride.
Yeah, the last commission meeting, we, uh, accepted all, both of these bids or from the contractors and we just wanted to clarify that we're gonna award the bid, or I recommend that we award the bid to the lowest bidder, Dust Busters, in this situation.
And that is just for the mag chloride and not the base products?
Yeah, that's right, because, uh, they don't meet the spec, so therefore we couldn't not, um, you know, accept those and use those at that price, um, if we're, so that's why in the next, uh, agenda item, we're set up a bid or request for proposals for a base stabilization products. Um, we didn't want to isolate just one brand or anything like that, so there's many, many different options, so we want to see what's out there, what's best for our roads, so this is strictly towards the mag.
Um, is it just one motion?
It would be, we're just dealing with the mag on this, so it's, uh, I just have a quick question. I know there was, uh, um, the reason we accepted both bids, which we found out later, we weren't supposed to be, that was not allowed, but, uh, um, there was some questions as far as opportunity to get, they both could provide a service, basically was the one. Have, I guess, uh, it was brought to our attention that possibly we could do that if we had identified areas and that's, that's, you probably haven't got, done that, or is that, you're, you're just wanting to, uh, move forward with it and accept a low bid is what I'm hearing, but is there an opportunity to possibly involve both of these companies?
Yeah, there, I would say that there is, but I would like, can they explain it further? But I mean, the residents, if they're paying for it, I don't know if they have a preference.
Yeah.
It's, it's, to, to my view, you have to award a bid. Um, that's what the statute says, you award to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Uh, ran this through legislative audit, uh, Troy discovered other counties that, that just accept the bids rather than award. Um, legislative audit is fine with accepting the bids, making the highway superintendent choose which ones to use on which projects. They just have to justify that for that project, it's the lowest cost. And that's particularly true with gravel, um, because the distance you have to haul it has to be factored into the total project cost. It may be cheaper to buy the rock from point A, but by the time you get it out to where you need to use it, point B is actually cheaper, even though the price per ton is higher. The transportation costs make it cheaper.
So therefore.
They say it's the most, uh, advantageous to the county to, to process that way.
Therefore, what, what you just said though is we could accept both bids and then that would, it would leave it up to Troy at both, at, at that instance to basically determine what's the cheapest at that time.
What's, what's the cheapest? That does not allow them to make the choice on, well, Dust Busters isn't available on Tuesday when we're going to be.
No, I, no, I understand that.
But it's purely a cost analysis, this is what it's supposed to be at.
So if we did accept, as we did in the last meeting, if we'd accept both bids and then Troy could make the call, say that morning or a week before, can you be at Alkali Road or, or Red Scaffold Road, I don't care what road it is, I'm just hypothetically making a statement. Um, and then at that point, he could make that determination, is that accurate to say?
And he just needs to, to justify on each project and it's a little harder with, with, you know, I, I think with the mag chloride, because, you know, to identify the project.
Sure, so if he had something written down, this was more advantageous, or it probably cheaper would be the key word.
Cheaper's the way, um, what legislative audit suggests is like with the gravel, we have three bids.
What?
And you do the, the math, you know, so much per ton plus mileage equals this rate.
What if it came down to a point of, say, he called, uh, Dust Busters and they said, we're not available? And then would, since both bids were accepted, does cheaper have to play into that?
Um, if they're unavailable, he could do a sole source and again, that's just documentation. You, you document on that project that, uh, the sole source available for that project at that time was X.
So what I'm hearing is.
Describe the circumstances.
What I'm hearing is it is okay to accept both bids.
And paper trail is, is what legislative audit wants.
So if that is something we would go through with, Troy, is that something that you could get done? Is that gonna complicate things for you?
No, I don't think so. It might actually help us out, so, I mean, we document everything anyway. And, um, yeah, if it's a scenario where it is justifiable and cheaper, I would definitely like to be able to go with either or.
Uh, I mean, I, I think, I like the opportunity to do both and the reason for that is if we have a section, an area of the county that we're trying to put mag in and we are delayed because of not getting the material, um, that's not just a delay to the project, but we have equipment staged, right? So to me, I think it is cheaper and I think you can say that, if I'm not mistaken, right? I mean, that would be my biggest thing is if, if it takes us a week to do these set of roads and we can't get to them until the week after, well, then we had equipment sitting around waiting and, or we had to reposition or, I mean, I think generally in, in my mind, um, that's the fallacy of government. It's, is making things harder to do things easier, so, um.
Well, isn't that a problem we had a couple of years ago?
It is, yes, and that's one of the reasons that, uh, we requested some additional information.
Uh, so if that's, if, I guess I'd be in favor of, uh, of accepting both bids if that's the case, if, if we can go about it that way and it's not a problem with your office and.
Yeah, it's fine, I just, yeah, we just wanted to clarify that, you know, we also accepted the alternates, which we can't do because they didn't meet the spec for mag.
And this would be mag specific.
Yep, exactly.
Do we need to have another motion since we accepted?
No, you accepted both bids at the previous, so you're fine, you're done with that and Troy is correct, you can't take the alternate product because it, it wasn't asked for.
Okay.
So you didn't bid it out and that's why it's up on the next step. And I think you did a great job on the next one, just describing, hey, here's our end result. Present to us what you want, here's, here's what we want for the end result.
My request is just make sure you document.
Yep, absolutely.
Um, and I want the minutes to include that, uh, no motion, no action was necessary since we had already, we previously accepted both bids at our previous meeting. We include that in our minutes, please? Okay, so if that's taken care of, unless there's some change to that, let's move on to, uh, item I five, which is the, that's now we're dealing with base stabilization.
Yeah, we would like to begin, uh, the request for proposal process to obtain the concentrated liquid road and base stabilizing, base stabilizing material. We've, uh, you know, used base stabilization in the past, a couple of different brands that I'm aware of within the county and we found, you know, good results and we're basically looking for other options since we can't, you know, just pick and choose a name brand where, uh, took this route for the request for proposals versus a notice to bid for a certain spec, because I don't really have a spec for proprietary, uh, products that were, you know, that are out there, I guess, that are available in the area, so if there are any other base stabilization methods, whether it's the application or just selling the product, I mean, we're open to, you know, any ideas that are gonna help us out with county roads.
So these are based on, uh, products like Base One or Base Bind?
Correct.
That we have previously used.
Yep, those are the two we've used and I know that there are others that I've researched, I just don't have experience, so it'd be nice to have a, some more information.
And we know that there are suppliers in the area that do supply liquid base stabilization material. We just may not know the names or what's in them.
Yep, exactly.
But this is to set a hearing for the bid opening.
Uh, is it a hearing?
Well, he's asking, yes, it's asking for have a bid opening, so we.
But just why, you know, why we're doing this is because of that.
Certainly, but I'm just, yeah, I just want to clarify that we're setting the hearing for a bid opening.
Um.
He's asking us to.
I'll make a motion to set the hearing, or to, uh, to allow for bidding, I guess?
To open the bid process and set the hearing, I think, right, Ken?
Uh.
This letter says June tenth, Tuesday.
Okay, so, um, make a motion to set, start the bid, bid process with bid opening on June tenth at ten o'clock. That work?
But the letter says, correct?
Yep.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to open the bid process and to set the hearing for June tenth, uh, twenty twenty-five at ten o'clock. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
My motions are getting messy.
Uh, brings us down to I six, which is a joint powers agreement with SDD DOT. Uh, there's, this would be legal, we, uh, be something we could discuss and exec with legal, uh, if, if, if we would choose or if we decide to keep moving forward, everyone's reviewed it, I'm fine with that as well.
I'll give a brief update on it and then we can make the decision. Um, this is on New Underwood Road, the DOT would like to start a survey process and in order to do that, they need to have authority within our right of way. Um, I had Ken rewrite this, but I'd like to get commission approval prior to sending it to the DOT for their approval and review.
There was discussion of the necessity of some of the language in there and whether it created the impression that we were planning to move forward with the road swap. Uh, made changes as highlighted, I think what you've got up there is, basically we redlined out everything in section four, um, but leaving it to just, that we anticipate.
And if, we did discuss this with the DOT, with Secretary Junt on the phone, uh, and it appeared that he may be okay with it.
Yes, he, he wanted us to do a proposal of what language we wanted to emit and it'd be my suggestion you, uh, authorize sending this to DOT for their review and then it'll come back for signature.
Uh, any other questions, comments? I'm fine with that, just, uh, given it's sent, as Ken just said, to send to them for their review, this is what we're gonna agree to, uh, but if someone else is more comfortable, we can discuss this with legal later.
Already had the discussions on it, so I read through it, it was exactly what we discussed, so.
So if I can get a motion then, if that's the desire of the commission to send this on to DOT for their review?
I'll make a motion to, um, forward the joint powers agreement to the DOT for review.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to send this agreement on to DOT for their review. Uh, is there any discussion to that motion? So that would be not, this is not even us accepting it, this is just sending, so.
Just sending it, yeah.
We'd need to send it back for our signature.
Mainly because we made so many modifications.
So they'd have to send it back for our signature, so any dis- more discussion to that motion?
So any more discussion to that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. I seven, notice to bidders.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I just ask who's going to send that to Mr. Junt?
I can forward that, and I'll copy, uh, you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah? Uh, I seven, notice to bidders, twenty twenty-five gravel crushing.
We, um, rejected all bids the last time we did this, uh, so we're putting the same information out for rebid. We did change, uh, a sentence in the, our verbiage in the notice to bidders just to clarify what exactly we wanted in our sealed envelope. And that is to include the, uh, prohibited entity status sheet.
With the cost.
Yes.
One of the rejected bidders indicated they were confused between the notice to bid and the specs, uh, as to whether they needed to submit. So, well, if you're confused, then reach out and find out.
Yeah.
Um, the other change that was made was to the volume. We added the plus or minus ten percent. Um, as it was previously written, we're requesting sixty thousand tons, but they don't have to do anything. I mean, they're not contracting to crush anything, or they could crush two hundred thousand. So this way, we're limiting both up and down as to what we're going to get.
This is, we set the hearing at our last meeting, if I recall, um, to open on, you know, a certain date, right? So, yes.
Is that included in there?
So, yeah, I understand. So this is, what I'm asking is, this is just to approve the letter that's going out there.
Yes, to publish.
To publish, okay. So, because the hearing's already been set. Is that correct? Yeah? I guess do so before at least our next meeting, so we make sure that's set. Or we can set, we can make it all in the same motion, it doesn't matter. But we already did set that. Any other questions, comments on this?
Motion.
Fine with that. Interaction, yeah.
Uh, motion to begin the bid process for the budgeted twenty twenty-five gravel crushing project. Um, the bid opening is, will be set for June tenth at ten AM?
Uh-uh, May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh. Does that work with the timing? It does, yes.
Well, yes, because we said it last time, so that gave us enough time to get that published.
So the recommended action on the agenda was different.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the letter says the twenty-seventh. Oh, what did we set that as? I'm sure we set it for the twenty-seventh, and that's the reason we set it last meeting.
I'm pretty sure that's why we did, but-
Yep.
Uh, so my motion is, uh, for bid opening on May twenty-seventh at ten AM.
Second that.
Motion and a second on the floor to open the bid process and set the hearing for May twenty-seventh.
Well, I guess we, yeah, it was previously, but-
Yep, we are good, okay. Any more discussion to that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us down to communicate, J one. Thanks, Troy. I think we're good to, for the rest, I think we covered everything. Anything in communicate, anyone wants to talk about?
No.
Uh... Let's go to J two.
So Board Docs is actually going to be obsolete as of the end of September of this year. We will be moving to a company called Diligent. Um, it is going, it's owned by the same people that own Board Docs, but they're just moving to a new platform. It will cost fourteen thousand dollars a year, which is a five thousand dollar increase over our current nine thousand dollar a year expenditure. However, in the team's meeting that I was in to review it, it looks like it's going to be a much better product.
Can we search?
That's exactly what I was going to ask. Are we going to be able to find something in it?
They tell us that we will be able to search, yes, and that we can sort.
Oh, that'd be great.
So I am going to be, assuming you approve this, I will be working with them over the next six or eight weeks or so, actually, six or eight weeks in June and July, to help them get everything moved from the current Board Docs platform to the Diligent platform.
Any other questions, comments, interaction?
I don't know how we'll be able to function if it works.
We anticipate everything's going to transfer over.
Yes, everything is supposed to transfer over.
Any other questions, comments, or action?
I will make a motion to approve the amended contract, um, with Diligent.
Second.
I did for enhanced-
Motion is second on the floor to approve this contract with Diligent. Any discussion to that motion?
Did they explain why it's going to cost fifty percent more?
That's just what happens during, no, they did not explain why.
So they changed their name and doubled?
They do have a better product, I will say that. I mean, from what I saw on the online meeting.
Any more discussion to that motion to accept this contract? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye? Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us down to J three, Weston Heights Lot, owned by Mead County. Again, this would be possible, some legal, uh, statute. Yep, uh, there's a couple items we will have to address with it, ones the mulling. But, uh, if that's, if you so desire, we'll talk about that after exec. Uh, brings down the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, and or action?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Thanks for making all of them.
Yeah, you're in a roll, Rich. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Motion is second on the floor to accept the consent calendar. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Brings to executive session. Get a motion going to exec.
For legal contracts and is there any-
I have a, I do have personnel, yes.
I'm not making this motion.
I make a motion to go into exec for legal and personnel.
Contracts.
And contracts. Goodbye, Markham's.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion is second on the floor to go into executive session for legal, personal, personnel, and contracts. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Call this meeting, I guess motion to come out of exact.
Make a motion to come out of exact.
Motion second to come out of exact, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign. Uh, we need to go back to item J three on the agenda, which is the under commission Weston Heights lot owned by Mead County.
Uh, there's a couple things within this, uh, we received letter that's on the board docs.
Uh, one issue is, uh, we're going to be charged for mowing. It's either us do it or have them do it for a fee.
That Weston Heights that's gonna do that is, I don't know, is that the homeowner? I don't know who was.
Ria, do you know? Who is gonna do the mowing?
Yeah, I did, I just hadn't pulled up.
It's Weston Heights Homeowner Association. They used to do it for free, but they don't wanna do that for free anymore.
And that makes sense.
Yeah, sure, uh, they're looking for $100 a mowing.
I, I think I'll make a motion to authorize Weston Heights homeowners association to mow the lot, um, kind of in the same manner they have been paying him $100 per mowing.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Take, uh, Mr. Severn on that one. Uh, I have a motion and second on the floor to have Weston Heights, to pay Weston Heights $100 for, for mowing. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
And Ria, for next meeting, uh, can you put on the agenda to look at surplusing that lot?
You wanna make that in the form of motion or just?
Oh, uh, do I need a motion?
Uh, technically, no, it might be cleaner, that way it gets on there for sure.
I'll make a motion to add, um, surplusing, uh, Weston Heights lot.
Consider surplusing.
Consider surplusing Weston Heights lot next, next.
I have a second to that.
I'll second that as well.
Motion and a second to put on next meeting's agenda of May 27th, uh, to consider surplusing this Weston Heights property. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Believe we have completed our agenda, so I therefore I will declare us adjourned.
Thank you everyone.
They're getting pretty, they're getting pretty bad.